Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. My name is Dan Hillmer. I'll be running the meeting this evening as mayor, serving this year. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Haro.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
I'm here. Did I lose sound?
Oh, yes, I didn't hear it. Thank you. And I'll note, Councilmember Candell is absent.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We do this customarily every meeting, so if you're in the council chambers or at home and are able, please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Those words seem to mean more and more every month. I see Councilmember Candell is entering the chambers. Welcome, Scott. The next item on the season's agenda is public comment. This item is for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding items that are not on the agenda? Allison, would you please let me know if there are people in the queue?
Thank you. I'm working for anyone in our audience. Come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Welcome.
My name is Frank Chazzo. I'm the area general manager for Vine Dining, Vine Hospitality, obviously Left Bank and Larkspur, Left Bank and Menlo Park, and the new Left Bank, Petit Left Bank and Tiburon. I received an email from Julian Skinner reminding me that the permit for my parklet expires on June 30th, and then it said in the staff is not able to extend permits beyond this date. I inquired through the email why that would be. They've asked staff for some information slash research before it returns. The issue would be need would need to be revisited by the city council. I am just first of all, want to want to state that we just did Easter Sunday at the Left Bank. We probably served 100 extra people due to the parklet. It was full throughout the day, brought many people to Larkspur, let many people get together with their families on holiday that we wouldn't have been able to, and it also let them feel real safe outside. There still is a real concern about safety, and obviously for our business, it really makes the business a much nicer business and brings more people to the community. I'm hoping that there could be a further discussion, you know, about extending the parklets, perhaps even a discussion about some sort of permanent outside dining without having to tear them down. And I'm hoping that it could be put on the agenda at least to have a vote to extend the parklets for another year at some point. And I am willing, and I know our company is willing to work with the city and make the parklet look any way the city would like it to look, do anything that the city would like us to do to keep it and continue on the awesome business that we've been doing since COVID started and continues to mount.
So. Well, we appreciate your comments. We have been thinking about this, and I'll be taking it up with the city manager as this is a real estate asset management discussion, and I hope you'll understand that's the context in which we'll have the discussion if we put it on the agenda. So it's not really about visual. It's not about emotional. It's about asset management.
I'd like it to go back on the agenda as a as a safety issue as well, not just an asset management. I definitely think it's a safety issue.
Well, the due diligence on real estate would include include safety, I assure.
I mean, safety for the community amidst of the.
Mr. Mayor, this is public comment time. Am I right? I'm not sure that.
Yes, it is, and we're not allowed to discuss this. I'm just trying to say that.
Thank you.
I'm just having my request that it would go back on as a safety issue, and my my request is that we put it back on the agenda as a safety issue.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on items that are not on the agenda?
I'll move to our Zoom attendees. Our first comment will come from Mahler.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Helmer, council members and staff. This is David Mahler. I live here in Larkspur, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the 20 members of the Larkspur Climate Group. And we are increasingly concerned about our worsening climate crisis and strongly support Larkspur taking actions to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. An action that I want to focus on right now is reducing the use of natural gas, which is methane gas in buildings. And this is because use of this fossil gas in buildings primarily for space and water heating produces about one quarter of Marin's greenhouse gas emissions. Now, I'm aware that the county of Marin has started work on an update of its green building code, which was adopted in 2020, and a key focus of the update will be to start ramping down the use of fossil gas in buildings. As I understand it, the county plans to address two building categories. The first is for completely new buildings, including residential, multifamily, and commercial. The county is planning to require that they be all electric, including having high efficiency electric heat pump, space, and water heaters. For remodels of existing residences, including single and multifamily, the county is planning to require the renovations need a target energy score using a point system that allows for a flexible range of building measures, including heat pumps, space, and water heaters. In addition, the county is actively supporting and promoting several voluntary measures and incentives to encourage owners of existing homes to install electric heat pumps, space, and water heaters when their gas fueled models need replacement. Now, the county has reached out to engage each of Marin's cities and towns in developing the updated green building code with the goal that all 12 jurisdictions adopt the same code provisions effective January 1st, 2023. And in fact, Marin County has already conducted two meetings with participating jurisdictional jurisdictional staff. I understand that Larkspur was one of the few jurisdictions that did not participate in either of these meetings, presumably due to the vacant planning director and chief building official positions. The next meeting by the county staff is tomorrow afternoon. I want to bring this issue and effort to your attention and request that you take two actions at this time. I realize you can't respond to me as a public comment, but the first is to add the green building code update as an agenda item to an upcoming council meeting, so Larkspur's participation in this process can be discussed in a public forum. And second, we'd like to ask you to ensure that Larkspur staff actively participates with the other Marin jurisdictions in developing the updated green building code. This is a really great opportunity for small jurisdictions like Larkspur to leverage county staff and county resources to help Larkspur meet its stated climate goals. And including in those goals is action RE-C3 in the Climate Action Plan 2030 that Larkspur adopted last year, which commits Larkspur to adopt an all-electric ordinance for new residential buildings by January 1st, 2023. So here's an opportunity to get that done leveraging county resources. And with state requirements for new buildings to be all-electric, still years off, and increasing development pressure from the regional housing needs allocation, we feel strongly that Larkspur needs to join with the other Marin jurisdictions in acting now at the local level. So I want to let you know, we're counting on your support for this important countywide initiative, and thank you very much for this time to bring it up.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public in the queue this evening, Allison?
Looking for any additional raised hands. And there's no further public comment.
Thank you for the public comments this evening. The next item on the agenda are presentations and proclamations. We have two. The first one is from the Central Marin Police Authority. It's their yearly update to our council, and it's a presentation by Chief Mike Norton. Welcome, Mike.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming I was just introduced. It made me log on and log off, but it's great to see you and members of the council. Thank you for inviting us to do our yearly presentation. This year, I actually delegated this task of the gathering of the statistics and the presentation to my second in command. I think most of you know him, Captain Hamid Khalili, and I'll be turning it over to his very capable hands here in a minute. I'll obviously be available as long as well as Captain Khalili at the end of the presentation to answer any questions you may have. So with that, Captain Khalili, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me share my screen with you real quick. All right, can everyone see that? Okay. As Chief Norton mentioned, what I'm going to be discussing with you very briefly is our annual statistics, and we're going to focus on five categories. Calls for service, traffic stops, reports taken, moving and parking citations, and traffic collisions. As we go through this presentation, I think it's really important for council to be aware of how much of an impact the pandemic has had on our standard operations. I mean, I'll get into some more detail on that, but the first slide you see here is our calls for service, and as you can see, we responded to 34,019 calls in the year 2021. It's a slight increase from the the prior year. Prior to the pandemic, we were averaging about 42, 43,000, so we still haven't hit full capacity yet, but I anticipate that increasing as the pandemic eases. As you can see, the the share distribution between the jurisdictions is almost the same as last year. Larkspur went down 1% where they were at 40% last year. You can see that the the busiest times of the day for us are right when people and and students go to school, starting around that seven o'clock hour and tapering off around six, seven o'clock in the evening. This next slide shows the top 10 calls for service locations. And just like previous years, the locations are directly related to the volume of people, so shopping centers tend to generate the most calls for service. Corder Madera has several, but because you can see Bonner Center, Redwood High School generates a lot of calls for service, Marin Country Mart, and then I'd like to direct council's attention to the two down below, 1100 Larkspur Landing Circle and 519 Via Casitas. And you might ask yourselves why. 1100 Larkspur Landing Circle is the generic address used for a call box that's located on the bicycle pedestrian path that goes from Larkspur to Santa Fel via the Cal Park Tunnel. That call box, as you can imagine, is a beacon for people to hit it and make false. I mean, it's in essence a 911 call button, and so we get a lot of those. Most of them are there's no merit to them. They just, you know, people walking by and hitting it and getting some entertainment out of that, but it still does require us to respond and check the area. The next one is 519 Via Casitas, and that one is actually a cell tower, and we get, and I'll show you in the next few slides. We get a lot of 911 duress calls from cell phones, and that pings to the nearest cell tower, and 519 Via Casitas is one of the major cell towers in that area. And then below, you could see that traffic stops are far above the highest generator of calls for service. For Larkspur, 13,261 of those 34,000 somewhat calls belong to Larkspur, and traffic stops again are were the number one generator, followed by wireless no duress, which is the 911 hangups via cell. We did respond to a lot of medical aids and assist the fire department with a lot of medical calls over the course of the last two years. And as you can see, Fridays seem to be the busiest day for for Larkspur. Traffic stops. As council is aware, traffic concerns within the communities are the number one issue that we've been dealing with, and there is a 67% increase from the prior year. But I just want to point out that that, you know, 2020 was an anomaly. No one had ever dealt with or prepared for a pandemic. And this is going back before the vaccines were available, when there was a lot of shelter in place. Schools were not in session. People were working from home, so there just wasn't that volume of vehicular traffic on the surface streets. But in 2021, with the advent of the vaccine, businesses going back to normal, schools going back into session, we saw more and more volumes of traffic. And that's the direct result of why you see such an increase in the number of traffic stops. Excuse me. As far as locations go, in Larkspur, you can see we do our fair share amount of traffic enforcement within the central Marin jurisdiction in Larkspur. And a lot of those areas are focused around the Doherty Corridor. We have, you know, three schools, and there's a high concentration of students, and student safety is paramount for us. So we do a lot of focused enforcement in that area. Again, a little repetitive, but this is a breakdown of the traffic stops. You could see by the day of the week, it's pretty, for the most part, evenly split as to how many traffic stops are conducted throughout the days of the week. The time of day is pretty self-explanatory, so when we see the the highest volume of vehicular traffic is when we conduct most of our traffic stops. The top five locations, obviously, Redwood High School, Magnolia and Doherty, East Francis Drake, Wornham, and then 250. And for council, I want you to be aware that it's not necessarily the location of the violation or where the traffic stop occurred, but we kind of rely on our CAD system, our dispatchers, where they enter the location. So most times where the infraction occurred is pretty close in proximity to these locations. Shifting gears a little bit, focusing more on reports now. You can see we took 20, 2,645 reports. It's an increase of about 11% from the prior year. A lot of the same reasons, more people going back to work, more kids going back to school. And again, the hours are for the same reasons. And Larkspur's share is higher than the other two jurisdictions. Some of that is attributed to the fact that we have the state, our main station in Larkspur, and we get a lot of citizens that walk into the building and file various police reports. Just like I mentioned before, the reports, again, they concentrate around the busy retail areas, the shopping centers. So no real surprises there. What you see before you are what we call part one crimes. Part one crimes are the major crimes identified by the FBI. And I'm going to talk about this just very briefly at the end of the presentation, but what we have been reporting and have been for, you know, as long as I've been a police officer, and so is the chief, are these part one crimes. And as you can see, for Larkspur, they've remained fairly flat. Minor variances here or there. These are the other crimes, so part two crimes, which are the miscellaneous crimes that we report to DOJ, and as you can see, drug offenses. Drug offenses have gone down just because of lowering of the penalties, the legalization of certain drugs. What we've noticed is the district attorney's offices are just not filing charges for certain narcotics violations anymore. The one thing that we did notice is that crimes against police have gone up significantly. And there's a variety of reasons why, but I think it's important to point out that more and more people are become combative and non-compliant with with us. Thefts thefts also increased. You can see shoplifting went up drastically. There's a variety of reasons for that, but some of that is the organized retail thefts that we saw over the course of the last year. Also, organized retail theft in and of itself became a felony crime. So, you know, I'm sure council recalls, we saw, well, you know, the mass looting. Larkspur did experience one of those last year, and I'll talk about that briefly in in a few slides. The losses, this is the monetary loss amounts for the various crimes, and as you could see, the very first category of robbery went up almost 1,300%. There is a story behind that. That is an anomaly, and so, as I mentioned previously, the organized retail theft incident that the city of Larkspur experienced was at a high end consignment store and in the Marin Country Mart. In that one single incident, the victim in that case suffered a little over a quarter of a million dollar loss. So that explains that a little bit, but as you can see, residential burglaries went down a little bit, commercial burglaries, the values went down. Larceny thefts went down significantly, and then motor vehicle theft remained fairly flat.
May I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Two slides again. On under crimes against police, can you talk a little bit about obstruction, since that's the primary seems to be the primary data point there?
Yes, that's it's a good question, Mayor. Obstruction is basically when a person obstructs us, I mean, for lack of a better term, so the delaying, the resisting, or the fighting of the police. Obstruction can be in the form of running away from the police. Obstruction can be in the form of challenging us to fight. Obstruction can be in the form of physical fighting of the police.
Thank you.
Sir, can I ask you a question as well?
Please.
I'm sorry, if you go back one slide further where it says major crimes. Under the thefts, it has the thefts going up 23 in Larkspur, 23% and 11%. Robbery down 40%. And then when I look at the the one that you just showed with the financial loss, it looks like all the thefts actually went down, but robbery went up. Is that just because that one incident you're talking about?
Yeah, the robberies, that is the quarter million dollars is why the value went up so much.
So that was considered a robbery?
Correct, correct. There was, if I'm not mistaken, there was about 41 people that broke the window, went in there within a matter of minutes and stole a little over quarter of a million dollars of property, and and that crime is classified as a robbery, not a theft.
And I'm sorry, why is there? A security guard in the area, so there was a a person who was a victim as opposed to just if it was completely empty, he would have had a, it would have been a burglary.
Appreciate it. You just answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Hameed.
Okay, no problem, Mr. Mayor. Again, shifting gears a little bit, focusing on moving and parking citations. You can see that we issued 1,913 moving citations, so that is a traffic violation. Red light, stop sign, speeding, whatnot, and then our parking citations were at 3,519. Again, those are increases from the prior year only because we see a lot more vehicular traffic. And then there's a breakdown, if you're interested, by by month of our activity. Traffic collisions. Again, yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, I just going back again to the the slides with the theft and the vandalism and so forth. Couple of questions. One is that the vandalism also seemed to have gone up quite a bit, 53%. And I remember from our your presentation or Chief Norton's presentation, COVID had a specific type of theft increase, like catalytic converters and cars and so forth. Maybe you could just say a little bit more about the vandalism and also, you know, the the quality or types of incidents that are happening in these, you know, categories where there's a lot of increase.
Yeah, that's that's a great observation. These vandalisms, when we looked into them, believe it or not, they're just general vandalisms of more like spray paint, graffiti type vandalism, certain types of damage to vehicles, so maybe a smash to the window or a slashing of the tires that is also categorized as a vandalism, and so that's why we saw an increase to that crime type.
I'll add to, we just between 2020 and 2021, there was a good four to six months where it was a ghost town out on the streets. For those of you that maybe went out and walked your dogs or went for a walk, especially at night. And this applies to our traffic stops, our crimes and everything, just not much was going on. And we don't have to go back a slide, but what we saw was very little shoplifting going on, because for about half the year, the stores were closed. But we did see an uptick in commercial burglary during 2020, because with the stores being closed, people were breaking in as opposed to walking in and out, for lack of a better term. And I think vandalism can be attributed to that. I'm not saying the the vandals were worried about catching COVID, so they weren't out and about, but it is a little harder to to go around if you're the only one out there walking around and commit certain crimes like vandalism. You can't really blend in as well. And it really, almost everything here, hopefully, you know, next this year, I think we're getting closer to to normal for 2021 statistics, and I think 2022, unless we have a major uptick, we should get back to more of a leveling and see truly what we have, but it's hard to analyze this with that, especially when you're looking at 2020 and the pandemic and the effects it had.
Thank you, and just one follow up question, I mean, to to that point, and, you know, Captain Khalil, you made it well, but, you know, the COVID distorts a lot of the percentages. Just, you know, anecdotally or from what you've looked at, if 2019 were the baseline, do any of these, you know, stand out? Because, you know, if we're just doing that, it's really hard to know what the trends are.
It's a great question. I think we're starting to see a leveling off of our going back to normal statistics. If you were to compare the 2021s to the 2019s, I think we're headed in the right direction. The one area that I mentioned previously that is of concern to us is the crimes against the police that without a doubt has gone up again for a variety of reasons. So if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so for moving citations in 2020, we issued 1,047, and parking citations was at 1,836. So as you can see, there's a dramatic increase in the number of in the volume of enforcement that we did. Again, I think it's pandemic related. We're seeing more volumes of vehicles on the road, and with that, you were saying bad driving behavior. Traffic collisions. It went up 17% to 494. Again, I firmly believe this pandemic related with more businesses not going remote and going back in the office and schools back in session and people just on the road more. You're inevitably going to see more collisions that occur.
Hameed, I have another question for you.
Please.
I just I just noticed, speaking for myself as as an observer, an almost total abandonment of any fear of getting caught for using your cellphone in your car. I just see people. They just they just don't even care, and I see accidents happening, you know, right before my eyes, because somebody's messing with their phone and they hit the car in front of them.
Right.
And I see it more often than not. I just is there anything that can be done about reminding people of these of, you know, the attention that's necessary to properly drive your car?
So, well, there's there's two components that directly relate to that that are in within our control. Number one is educating the public. And we we tried a variety of things, whether it's Nixal alerts or social media messaging, letting them know that it's illegal. The other aspect is the enforcement. And, Mr. Mayor, I can tell you without a doubt that we make distracted driving and distracted awareness a top priority with our with our officers and letting them know that that is an expectation. Because you're right, it there's a direct correlation between distracted driving and collisions. As a matter of fact, April is Distracted Driving Awareness Month, and so throughout the state, law enforcement agencies put a big, big emphasis on enforcing distracted driving. So, you know, I think with in general, what you what you see is just not from everybody, but a want disregard for the laws and for the safety of the general public. That's why we see, you know, speeders. That's why we see people running stop signs. Everyone's in a rush to go somewhere. So, you know, ideally, there would be nothing to enforce because people would be on their best behaviors. But I'm just not seeing that. And as a matter of fact, I see the trend going the other way. More and more blatant disregard for the law.
Unfortunately. Please.
Yeah, no, Kevin Harold. I just wanted to echo the observation about people driving much more recklessly lately. For whatever reason. And I guess my question is particularly along Sir Francis Drake. That's primary jurisdiction there is CHP, correct?
Up to a certain point on Sir Francis Drake, yes, you're.
So how is the relationship with CHP going in terms of their monitoring that kind of behavior on streets where they have primary jurisdiction?
We have a really good working relationship with the California Highway Patrol. We've done operations together in the Greenberry area, focusing on just that. You know, some of the areas of Greenberry, especially up in the hills, they get very convoluted as to what's ours and what's theirs. But we we work hand in hand together. You know, I think part of this is also staffing. I know the California Highway Patrol is just like any other law enforcement agencies throughout the state are dealing with some staffing issues. And so we have to prioritize and triage complaints and collisions and focus our attention on those areas with number one, the highest rates of collisions. And then followed closely by the volume of citizen complaints that we get. I tell people all the time, you know, when they call in a traffic complaint, it's really important to them and I fully recognize that. But we can't be everywhere at once. And so there's only so much of us to to go out throughout the jurisdiction. And so when we allocate our resources, we allocate them based on collisions and and citizen complaints. I'll add to.
And I really appreciate that. And frankly, because I access Sir Francis Drake a lot. Oops, because I live over in Greenberry. And I see the presence of Central Marin much more than I see CHP or the Sheriff's Department. So I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to optimize the allocation of those resources a little bit better. Because I know it's a lot of pressure on you guys to to be the primary responder in that setting.
I can speak to that. We we work really well with both agencies and it we I don't think it's happened since the pandemic. But in the past, we've actually done joint operations where we'll get one or two of our motor officers and one or two from CHP and we'll focus on the Greenberry Hills where we have joint jurisdiction as opposed to each of us trying to do, you know, our half and their half and things like that. We've even had instances where they'll come into our jurisdiction and assist us and then we go and help them on some of theirs. So there's a lot of sharing and mutual working going on. We'll add one more thing about the increase in collisions this year. Once again, it is a little bit of a statistical anomaly due to COVID. In twenty twenty, a lot less people were driving, right? No one was working in the office. The schools were closed. You could really get around town really fast. And we noticed it. We went out how long it would take us to get to San Anselmo, maybe it would be five minutes as opposed to twenty minutes when there's traffic. People started driving a lot faster and more recklessly during twenty twenty. We actually had a pretty good amount of car accidents, considering very few people were driving. But the one thing that happened in twenty twenty-one was we have a full year of the shopping centers being open. And when the captain gets to that slide, you'll see the bulk of our accidents are still parking lot collisions, which is like non-injury, really low speed, backing into stuff, ding in a car, calling the police, what have you. So I I'm kind of convinced when you look at how many happened in the shopping center that we probably had less significant accidents on city streets in twenty twenty-one. And that's not due to us doing a great job or anything. I'll be honest. I think it's just we have less significant accidents when we have a lot of traffic and no one wants to hear that. But the greatest solution for slowing everybody down is frankly, traffic. It works better than anything because there's nothing you can do about it. So.
Part of the reason that I raised the question was to compliment the Central Marin Police Authority for the work that they do. As I said, your guys are very obviously the most present in our part of the community. And I want to make sure that the the need for that presence is an interest shared by our our partners. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Definitely will pass that concern on to our partner agencies. As the chief mentioned, the traffic collisions, you'll see that they're concentrated in and around the retail centers. A lot of people coming in and going out and also with a high volume of traffic in the shopping centers themselves, we see a lot of minor, minor vehicle collisions, whether that's two vehicles backing out of a parking spot at the same time or pulling in and fender rubbing another vehicle. Let's still consider a traffic collision. And then for twenty twenty-one, we saw seventeen percent increase where last year we had four hundred and twenty-two traffic collisions. And then this slide here just kind of encapsulates the number of minor injuries, no injuries, major injuries and where those top five locations are. And again, no surprise here. Bonner Center, the shopping centers, and then the Sir Francis Drake Larkspur Landing Corridor, as I'm sure council is aware and probably experienced it. We see a lot of traffic, especially in the evening hours along that Easter Francis Strait corridor. So we do see a lot of collisions with just the volume of traffic and also with the fair terminal, there's just a lot of cars on the road. In this last slide here is a threshold analysis that compares twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. It's just another redundant slide in here for for you. But with that, that is the end of the presentation and I would be happy to answer any questions council has.
I have a selfish question. If you could go back two slides on the hit and run property damage only.
Not sure why it's not working. Oh, there we are. This one here.
Yeah, I was curious as to whether that count for for the current period was. I wanted to compare that to the last few years and see if things have gotten more reckless in that regard with respect to hit and run incidents since two thousand nineteen. Maybe you could get back to me with that.
Yes, I'd be happy to to look into that and get back to you, Mr. Mayor, because I don't have the data in front of me. The only data point that I have in front of me is for Easter Francis Drake. We experienced thirteen collisions the prior year versus the eight in twenty twenty-one. But other than that, I would be happy to look into that and and report back to you.
Well, it sounds like a decrease instead.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, the hit and run property damage, that's mainly going to be your shopping centers where you come out to your car and you have a big dent on the door and someone's backed into your car or pulled into it and they were not courteous enough to leave a note. We do take those seriously and follow up and try to identify and hold responsible anyone who does that. But usually that requires a good witness or something like that.
Thank you. And I'll open it up for questions from council members.
Mayor, I'll have one.
Yes, Catherine.
Thank you, Captain. I know you don't break the the statistics down by age of the interaction with the resident or citizen, but there's been a lot being published about the mental health crisis of our youth. And I'm wondering if you're seeing with our juveniles and interactions with law enforcement an increase and in in a particular way in which you've had to engage more with our our young people population since the pandemic, they've gone through a lot of of transitions. And I know a couple of years ago, we talked a lot about the mental health needs of a lot of our high school students. And I'm wondering if you're finding that that's increasing.
That's a great question, Councilmember Way. Without having the data in front of me, I'm just pulling things out of thin air. But I can tell you that we have seen an increase in the number of mental health evaluations with for with our youth community. I know Redwood High School and I believe Archie Williams now has a a program like a wellness center where juveniles can go in and report various issues that they're experiencing. And the wellness centers and high schools in general work very closely with us so that we can provide whatever resources and services that we can offer. But yes, I have noticed an increase in in the number of interactions we've been having with youth surrounding mental health.
Just to give some perspective too, you know, a couple of years ago, every year, our mental health hold seemed to go up and up and up. And every year, we're getting more and more assistance on that. So as recently as five years ago, probably any mental health incident at a school, they were calling the police or our school resource officer, any high school, right? And anything that happened in our jurisdiction, we were it. We were the only ones handling all those. And in the last several years, the schools have gotten a lot better and they're handling a lot on their own. And they're doing a great job with it. And we're not, it's not even being reflected in our statistics. And then on top of that, you have Mobile Crisis Unit that started a few years ago and they're getting more and more. And we use them at every opportunity, any mental health goal usually unless it's involving a weapon or it's really to the point where we know we're going to have to handle it, we first call and go, hey, are they available? And if they are, they come down and handle that. So it is, it's hard to get an exact number, but it is very significant and it is youth and it's it's elderly and it's middle aged and it's my age. It's just, it's across the board, unfortunately. But we do have some more tools now.
And then also in regards to our youth, it's been about eight years, maybe even ten, since the social host ordinance was brought in by all three of our jurisdictions. Are you finding that there's less of a need to enforce social hosts that that people are getting the getting the clue not to allow parties at their houses as adults? Or are you still seeing the same number of social host violations?
I can answer that. We're we're seeing less, but it's still a great tool to have when it happens. And we did have a couple during the pandemic, which was really frustrating. I'll be honest with you, like in twenty twenty to be dealing with social hosts. It's like, really? But it is, it's a tool that we don't have to use a lot, but it's great to have. I'm not sure how much of a deterrent it really has, but it's really our one tool to hold people responsible. And it feels like it almost takes one a year to get through the school and the parents. And then they go, oh, I could have, I could have gotten in trouble for that. Who who would have known, you know?
And then I just had one comment. A couple of weekends ago, I ran into one of your new young officers in the Piper and Town Park as I was walking the dog. And I just introduced myself and asked him if he's enjoying working for Central Marin. And he was just thrilled to say how much he enjoys working with you all and the type of community policing he gets to do as opposed to San Francisco. And he had this interesting comment that in San Francisco, he would interact with a citizen, maybe do a report and never get any follow up and never see the impact of what he could do. And here, he said, he had a chance to get to know members of the community. And then when he intervened with something, he could also find out how it was, how it was resolved, if there was resolution to the issue. And I thought that was just a really nice comment that it was the type of policing that created a great deal of professional satisfaction. So don't remember the officer's name, but it was, it was, it was nice to hear that that was the type of support he felt he was getting from his leadership. So thank you for that.
And thank you, Catherine. That's an outstanding observation. It seems to me just in contrast to some of the previous years where we've heard comments, I can't remember exactly from who, but there seemed to be a bit of perception that there was a lack of action in the Central Marin Police area with respect to officer interests. This this story turns that notion on its on its head and makes the positive experience one of community policing, not one of conflict management. So I think that's a great story. Other council members with questions or comments? Scott?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question. I noticed that there were three drug driving offenses. And I was curious if you could just share where we are with cannabis DUI testing. I know they've been working on like a saliva test, you know, some something to see if somebody's on the influence of cannabis. You have any kind of update where we are with that type of testing?
Yes, great question. We are, as an industry, we are lacking in being able to detect quantities and of cannabis in the blood system. Obviously with alcohol, it's fairly easy. There's a lot of technology out there. But with cannabis, I know the laws are there, but it's very difficult for officers to be able to accurately detect the quantities in in the blood system. Right now, what we're using is just training and experience. We are sending our officers to courses to be able to identify the signs and symptomology of a person who's under the influence. And that's been one of the most helpful tools for us. I hope in the near future, technology catches up with the laws that are out there and gives us the tools and resources to be able to readily identify someone who's under the influence.
Thank you.
Other council member questions or comments? Gabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a few questions. Maybe I'll just throw them all out there. The first one was, I'm not sure I saw this in the statistics, but you know, besides the frequency of, you know, and breakdown of different calls, do you also capture which ones, you know, led to arrests, you know? So for example, if theft has gone up, you know, what is the trending for how many thefts, you know, actually led to an arrest? And then a separate question, you know, given fire season is coming and I guess MWPA is working probably with Central Marin Police, you know, how, if you could just comment on on how evacuations are going and if there are any metrics built into, you know, into how the police will be working, you know, in that arena. And then the last question is, is just, just how you guys are doing with HR? You know, I've spoken with Chief Norton, you know, a few times and I'm always curious how, you know, recruiting new police officers is going. And, you know, if you can maybe just comment on that, I appreciate it. And also thank you for a really clear presentation.
Of course, our pleasure. I can, I can touch on the first question. You're right, the the statistics weren't in the the presentation, but we've been actually very successful in our arrest rates for thefts. As I mentioned, that one incident in in the Marine Country Mart where it was the robbery of a little over a quarter of a million dollars, we were able to work with an agency in the East Bay to identify a couple suspects and successfully arrested them along with Palo Alto PD where they actually went right after Larkspur and and committed another robbery. So I would say in general, yes, anytime you see an increase in thefts, we typically see an increase in the number of arrests. Prosecution and follow through in the criminal justice system is a whole different other conversation. But in that aspect, yes, we are seeing an increase.
I can touch on the other two if you want. In terms of evacuation and wildfire, we rolled out Zone Haven along with the fire departments last year. And we kind of rushed it because the fire season ended up lasting a little longer than we thought, but we got it out there and we've been meeting and working on that. And we're just getting ready to kick off a bunch of what we call tabletop trainings, which is without being in the field, we create scenarios of wildfires and we're having to work through evacuation. So that's coming and now we'll be using Zone Haven while we do those trainings. So we'll become more and more familiar. And I think that is the the best thing we can do at this point. And I'm sure as fire season ramps up a little bit more, you'll see some more another push to for Zone Haven for people to get familiar with it and to sign up for the different things. That always kind of kicks off fire season. And in terms of HR, you know, it's not a, it's no different than the rest of the nation right now for law enforcement. It's hard to recruit officers right now for various reasons. It's hard to recruit any employees. It seems like no matter what field you're in right now, we're noticing that, right? But it's not a, it's not just a CNPA issue. It's not a county issue. It's not a state issue. It's a nationwide issue. But I will say, even though we're getting, you know, fewer and fewer applications, it's, you know, we end up getting about eight applications for three positions now and we, you know. Eight applications for three positions now and we, you know, not that long ago, maybe 10 years ago, we'd get about 80 for one. It's just different times, we're adapting. And I will say that the people, we're still managing to kind of get those gold nuggets or diamonds in the rough and I don't want to jinx it, but we are getting lucky. And the the people that are making it through, even though it's harder and harder and more work. It's kind of like the officer and I know who you're referring to, Councilmember Way, but we're getting to some really great people and their attitude and outlook on policing is. It makes me kind of feel bad about how I was 20 years ago, you know, I, they're better. I mean, I'll just be honest, their their attitudes are 100% better and why they want to do it. And it's not a surprise because after what's gone on in the last two years with the pandemic and in the George Floyd and the social justice reforms. It takes kind of a special person to still want to do this job, right? And that's what we're seeing is the few, it's a lot less, but the ones we're getting, I think you're going to be really happy with for years to come.
Thank you, Chief. Other council member questions? If not, we'll see if there are members of the public that have questions or comments they would like to make regarding this presentation.
Thank you. I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members and our first comment will come from Kevin Carroll.
Good evening and thank you, Chief, interesting presentation and Captain. A couple of things jumped out at me in looking at the calls for services, one of the addresses was. Five one nine via Casitas, which is, I believe, the Tamil Pius, the address you're using for it. And I'm assuming we're not having a case of seniors gone wild or something, I assume that's assisting on medical calls mostly. But I just thought that was interesting because of all the concerns about 1251. South Alicia coming down the road, that that's the one address that sort of popped up there on the top 10 list. The other was 1100 Larkspur Landing, you said was the smart camera and I'm, I'm just curious why that falls into your jurisdiction as opposed to. Smart's jurisdiction, since they do have a police chief, I believe, and they do have extensive video. Of the, I believe, live video of on the cars and stuff. So I would think they would have an infrastructure to have a camera on that call box to or could install a camera on that call box to. Perhaps cut down on some of the nuisance calls that you're getting. And it just strikes me as odd because I know like with BART, if anything happens on BART property. They insist that their police handle it, not the local jurisdiction. So I just was curious about that. And then the last thing, I'm kind of curious if you are exploring or. Do use or will be using drones in the future to kind of supplement the manpower issues. Thank you.
Of course, Mr. Mayor, I can answer those questions.
Please.
Mr. Carroll, to your first point with the Tamil Pius, I assure you, it's not the elderly going wild. I mentioned in my presentation that there is a cell tower affixed to that area and we get. A good majority of our 911 hang up calls via cellular phones that pings to that cell tower. And that's the address that pops up. It doesn't mean necessarily that there's anything occurring at that address. It just means it's a 911 wireless duress call, pinging from that cell tower. In regards to the 911 calls at the call box. The area where that call box is located is actually on the bicycle pedestrian path, which falls under the Central Marin jurisdiction, not Smart. That is a very widely used trail or path, I should say, for pedestrians and bicyclists. And there's really no safeguard, it's designed to be a. A call box, if you will, where anybody can walk up or ride up to it, hit the call button and communicate with the dispatcher. And summon help and that's what it was designed to do. Unfortunately, what we've been seeing is just for entertainment purposes, they're hitting the call box and that call goes up to the dispatch center. Very, very, very rarely is that a legitimate call for service. More times than not, we just see people horsing around and pushing that button unnecessarily. And then to your last point with the drones, no, we currently don't use drones. I know that there are agencies in Southern California that use drones as a as a method to respond to calls for service. They have a whole fleet of them. That's not something we're looking at. It's not very cost effective and it takes a lot of manpower to develop a program like that. And there's a lot of concerns that I'm aware of too, so. No, we're not.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that have questions or would like to make comments regarding the presentation this evening?
For any additional raised hands, for anyone from our audience? And there's no further public comment.
Chief, Captain Halili, that was a very impressive presentation and a lot of information that's very helpful. We thank you very much for your service and the work you put into presenting this this evening.
Thanks very much. Have a good night.
Thanks very much. Have a good night. We have one additional presentation this evening and that is the Strategic Communications and Community Engagement Update. Would the city staff like to make a report?
I believe the staff might be on mute.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Shannon O'Hara, I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. We have lots of presentations tonight, so I'll keep this one short, but I did want to provide the council and the community with an update date. With our strategic communications and community engagement efforts as we do from time to time.
Well, please assume that we're very interested in this because it's probably one of the more important issues we need to face.
Also helps that I'm at the top of the meeting, right? So the city adopted a strategic communications and community engagement plan in 2019, we'll be going through some. Some metrics and some updates on this, starting at that date, even though we certainly had communications before that time. New efforts that we had in the 2021, early 2022 is we really increased our participation in regional efforts and campaigns. There's lots going on in the county, lots going on with fire mitigation, public safety, we're in the midst of a drought. And there's also lots of community groups that are doing things for our community. And we supported communications on special projects, which I'll get to in a minute. Talk about the goals for 2022, we're going to be promoting a number of new software and digital upgrades anticipated to launch this year. Continue to support department communication efforts, create a sustainability communication plans. And develop and increase use of photographic and multimedia assets. We have a new administrative analyst coming on board shortly in the city manager's office. And although we can't announce who that is yet, they have some background in videography and photography. And then also just continue to increase support of our regional efforts. This next slide here is a breakdown of just our social media communications efforts. If you'll look, all of our platforms from 2019 until now are growing in audience engagement. That's not a surprise, but you can ask Netflix, it's not necessarily a given that you'll always grow your share. Particularly, we're proud of growing our share in our e-newsletter, which is both our council highlights, which is provided by the city clerk's office. As well as the city manager update, which is pushed out through the city manager's office. We started out with, you know, 600 folks and now we're over 2,000 and growing. So we're really pleased to see that. Also, our departments and their efforts are continuing to grow their audience share over time. I always plug our newsletter, every single update I have, because I think it's a great resource for the community. If you, especially if you want to casually check in on what the city's doing and what they're up to and what might be of interest. Every other week, members of the community receive one of these two things if you're on our e-newsletter list. After council meetings, you get a digest as well as links to the actions the council have taken and any presentations that have been provided to the community. And then on the other week, there's a more general newsletter of things that are going on in the city as well as things that may be going on with our partner agencies for us to help push out the message. Special projects, there's a number of things going on, our. Our department heads will likely cover this and their goals and accomplishments, but one of our big projects right now is our housing element update. So the city manager's office, as well as the community development department. Has worked with a consultant to really get the word out about our housing element update, that process, community participation. Right now, there's actually an interactive tool on the standalone website, I'll plug it, livinginlarkspur.com right now. Where members of the community can decide where they might like to see where we place our new housing opportunity sites and it will be taken into account. And so that was actually a mailer that was sent out. This is an example of what we've pushed out on Instagram. In general, if we post something on Instagram, we get maybe a couple of hundred views. We've been experimenting with doing ads, so for under 100 bucks a pop, usually we'll get somewhere around 1,500 to 2,000 views. I will have the caveat that does not necessarily mean that people want to sit through a three hour meeting. So our meeting attendance has increased, but it's not in the thousands just yet for that. Work in progress. And then another special project, this past year, we had a presentation a couple of meetings ago, actually from the consultant we were working with, where we did a community survey to gauge. There was a scientific portion as well as just a participation for anyone who wanted to offer some feedback. About services in Larkspur and living in our community, we're in the process of launching. An interactive website through Poco's portal where folks can actually see interactively where that survey landed. As well as we're using that portal to do a number of just short surveys for feedback to the community that aren't scientific surveys. So currently, right now, we have a disaster preparedness survey where folks are welcome, we have it on our website, welcome to provide feedback about disaster preparedness and what their. Feelings are about it and preferences. And then finally, although on this evening, we're getting some much needed rain, we are moving into summer and communications land, we're already in summer. So we have these very summary colors for our downtown and North Magnolia Business District banners, although when shown here are downtown, but we also have them from North Magnolia. To just promote our community because it's great both for our downtown commercial corridors. And that's the end of my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions, members of the council or members of the community may have.
Thank you, Shannon, that was a great presentation. Are there council members that have questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, Kevin?
Yes, yes, Kevin.
Just on the, on the last point, Shannon, thank you for doing that and doing the outreach. As a member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. The, the support that the chamber gets from the city in many ways is greatly appreciated. And that's just a really wonderful example of of synergy between what the city does and what the chamber does. So it's very much appreciated.
Gabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Yeah, Shannon, I wanted to thank you for, for both the. The newsletter, the progress there and also the outreach to, you know, get more people involved in the housing element. My question was on, you know, getting feedback from people, so it's great that we're sending out a lot of messages. But how's it going, you know, getting feedback or, you know, what are the channels for that or any plans for, you know, improving those channels?
So feedback is not, what do you mean by feedback? If you could be just a little bit more precise, so I could answer that.
But you know, if, if, you know, in any of the, you know, I suppose any of the blasts or anything, you know, if there's a chance for people to. Respond or if there's a chance to monitor, I mean, I guess you had mentioned before, there's input on fire safety. So that's one great example, you know, I'm looking for any others.
Certainly, okay, so using the centralizing kind of our short survey portals, I'm looking at myself on screen, it's going to look so weird on video. Because I don't know quite where to look yet, I suppose I should be looking at the dice. Doing some of those short things through the Poco Portal, when we did the the community survey, part of that service is that every year we pay to to keep that active and to be able to look at results there. Also, when we have the administrative analyst, I didn't go into too much detail because this person hasn't even joined us yet and I didn't want to get too much into the work they'll be doing. But as our audience is actually growing and we're seeing real numbers now, we're going, the goal is to start actually actively monitoring our social media channels. That does not mean that they are 24/7 channels, if there's a case of emergency, etc., please call, you know, the emergency maintenance line 911, etc. But we're going to try to do more of a two way social media strategy, particularly we focused really heavily on Instagram the past couple of years because it's a robust model. The person who will be joining us also has a lot of experience in Twitter, etc., for that to also be a way for the community. To engage with us so far because of both staff time constraints and then the the size of the audience. We've actually, I don't want to say discouraged two way communication that way, but we've. Pushed folks to other methods of contacting staff because we just couldn't monitor things that way, so that's certainly one way. And then the department, various department heads will be talking about different initiatives they have to engage the community. So there are also a lot of other software programs coming online, etc., particularly in the community development department where folks will be able to. Engage with staff in in different ways that may be preferable to them.
Good, sorry, just one, one follow up question, I'm Shannon, I'm curious, like with the newsletter. At a very high level, if you look at the links and what the click throughs are, you know, where are you seeing most people interested? And you know, are there any topics or are there really no patterns?
Yeah, so in click through rates, like on a very, very broad level, usually events get more clicks, which isn't, isn't surprising, right? If something's coming up, folks will want to see the exact information if they're interested in the event. And then particularly the past, I would have to actually look deep in the debit in general, in the past couple of years. Library and Recreation always does great, our community services department for events. And then some of the the public safety, particularly around fire prevention, home hardening. Certain things that are often to the offered to the community that way generate more clicks. Then council highlights, sorry, just a general, if there's a consent calendar, people, I think, if they feel like it's passed, they don't necessarily go through and dig deep. But certainly, events and around public safety and fire prevention, we have a lot of engagement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Way?
Shannon, in regards to banners, I know we have, do we have a schedule of sort of what banner campaigns will be out? The one you showed was summer and then I assume there'll be a fall one and maybe a holiday one. Are you thinking that we should do maybe every couple of months or seasonal? That was my first thought because I, I've noticed banners sort of linger sometimes and I know we've had COVID and challenges with getting some staffing to take them down. But I'm, I'm wondering if a regular schedule may make them more appealing and effective. And then maybe I'm remembering this incorrectly, but I, I thought a few years ago, we also decided on locations for banners. That similar to what Cortomadera has, where they can put up, a nonprofit can put up a banner for the Twin Cities Little League or whatever it is. And we were putting up locations for those, but maybe I'm recalling that wrong, I don't know if that's still in the works.
You recall that correctly, so to the first point about seasonal banners, this year was, wasn't only the COVID anomaly, but as you'll notice now. Magnolia looks great, but there was a lot of construction, so when the construction began versus when we could get the banners out of there is why we were very much in the holiday season a little bit later into the year than usual. So for the corridor, we now actually have a set of full banners to where they will, if you notice, this is the summer, well, we have our holiday banners, we have some that are more for kind of spring themed. So there will be a schedule, that'll be a couple of months for each with a rest period in between. So there will be a little bit of a banner free Magnolia period to the actual banner locations. We do have those banner locations and occasionally people do take advantage of them, the chamber actually has at two of our banner locations right now, they're. They're advertising an event, two of the ones from the banner location we adopted. The next update, I can actually do a refresher on that, it might be great for the community to remember that we have that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like that because I can't recall where we decided those locations would be throughout the city. I did notice the cornhole tournament banner up in several places, so.
Two of those are ours. Yeah, the Chamber Cornhole.
Okay, thanks.
Larkspur coming into the big time. Are there other council member questions or comments on this presentation? If not, we'll open it up for the public, are there questions or comments in the public to see? Having a hard time hearing you, Allison.
Sorry about that, I'm looking for any raised hands from our Zoom audience or in person audience. I'll give it just a moment here. And there's no public comment.
Okay, is there any further discussion from the council on this topic to see? That was a great presentation again, Shannon, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the consent calendar. Are there any members of the council that would like to pull an item for discussion on the consent calendar? Comments or questions? Not seeing any, are there members of the public that would like to remove items from the consent calendar for questions or comments?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or anyone in our in chambers audience? And there's no public comment. And there's no public comment.
I'll entertain a motion from the council regarding the consent calendar for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Paulson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Way's seconds. We have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll call vote?
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrow.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes, the consent calendar passes unanimously. The next item on this evening's agenda is the city manager's oral report. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Actually got a few items this evening, so bear with me. Try to get through them quickly. I can't help but start with a comment about how amazing it is to be in a council meeting where we have three council members online and some of our staff online and we have council members and staff in the chamber. It really is an amazing new world that we've entered. I'm going to use that as a segue that I'm very excited to introduce a new member of the staff this evening. Some of you may have already had the chance to engage with her as a Larkspur employee. And some of you probably have engaged with her as employee of one of the three jurisdictions in Marin where she worked previously. I'm very excited to introduce our new community development director, Elise Simonian. And we've brought her on the screen. Elise is out of the chamber this evening. And when you hire somebody, you, you know, I feel like I've usually got a pretty good sense of how things are going to go. With Lisa's been really interesting. She's been here ten days, I think, nine days. And I've had multiple people and say to me, how'd you pull that off to get her to leave San Onofre? So for those who don't know, Elise was most recently the planning director in San Onofre. But I'm going to give her a chance to say hello and introduce herself. So Elise, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you. I'm really happy to be in Larkspur and glad to join the Community Development Department's staff team. It's really, it's been a great week and a half so far and really looking forward to working on all the projects that are going on with the new general plan and, and the new permitting system. There's a lot of, a lot of good things that I get to work on. So I'm, I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
Welcome, Elise. Nice to see you. One of the other council member welcomes, Kevin.
Oh, I just want to share the welcome. I think we've run into each other once or twice when I've been running around City Hall in the last couple of days. It's a pleasure to have you here and I'm glad you left San Onofre.
Again, I assure you. Are there members of the public that would like to make comments regarding our new community development director? We're very lucky.
I'm looking for any raised hands. And there's no public comment.
I'm sure you'll have plenty of opportunity to engage. Thanks and welcome again.
And so that, a few other items for the council and the public. First, I want to acknowledge Nick Stone from our Recreation Division and Community Services and his counterparts in Corder Madera. They pulled off the Easter egg hunt after a two year delay. And they had a pretty impressive store of eggs ready to go. So they did eight thousand eggs this year. It was Corder Madera's turn to host, so it was over in Town Park. And they put a lot of work into that event. It's, it's one of the ones that the Twin Cities community really embraces. And there was some concern the weather might deter children, but when plastic eggs and chocolate are involved, they still show up. So all the eggs disappeared rather quickly, I'm told. I'm going to make another pitch, please, please, if you haven't done so already, go to livinginlarkspur.com, register and participate in the interactive sections of that website. That website is about our housing element and the sites that are being considered for possible location of housing development to comply with our requirements under the current housing element cycle. You have a chance as, as a member of the public to tell us what you think and you have a chance to say, I'll use some sites and I'm just going to pick them. So we have some up the street, we have the Mount Tam Racket Club on the site list. You might want to tell us, you never want to see housing ever on that site, or you might want to tell us that's a wonderful location for housing. If you don't participate, we won't be able to take what you said into account. And we have to accommodate upwards of counting the, the buffer that they want us to put in eleven hundred units. I mean, we're talking a serious change to our community over time, and I think we can do this in a positive way. We need that community participation. So livinginlarkspur.com, please log in, please share your thoughts. Last evening, with the direction coming from Assistant to the City Manager Shannon O'Hare, who is really leading our outreach efforts, Chief Ruben Martin from Central Fire, Public Works Director Julian Skinner and I held a brief community meeting online via Zoom to do outreach about some of the disaster preparedness and infrastructure challenges that the city's facing. That's the start of a process to engage the community and talk about some of the concerns that we have as a city and some of the concerns we've been hearing about from residents in these topic areas, particularly around the area of being prepared for being resilient in the aftermath of an, of a disaster. And also around issues of infrastructure related to storm drains, both in terms of flooding and ensuring that water that runs through our systems is clean when it gets out to the ocean. So we really encourage folks to monitor our website and attend some of these meetings. We'd like to hear from you as we talk about all of this. And you heard Shannon during her communications presentation note that we've put a survey online that people can take online. You also, residents will be receiving in the mail, a copy of the survey as a postcard that they can send back to the city. So hope folks will take advantage of that opportunity. Later this evening, the council's going to be talking about its pointy for citizen of the year. And that's an opportunity now for me to remind the community that the Fourth of July Parade is coming back. We're all very excited about that. So make your plans accordingly. And then lastly, I want to thank the council from time to time. I accept assignments that take me away from the city on occasion. And last week I found out I was appointed to the statewide city managers group that's going to be working on sales tax issues. And so I was really pleased to be one of the North Bay representatives. That will be one of my distractions periodically from Larkspur. But I think that the return is, our voice will be heard in that discussion. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor and the council members.
I thank you, Dan. Just out of curiosity, how many Marin city managers are participating in the sales tax?
They haven't actually published the list, but I suspect I'm the only one because it's two for the entire North Bay Division and the North Bay Division is four counties, so.
I thank you. That speaks well for the city of Larkspur. Other council member questions or comments on the city manager's report? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding the city manager's report this evening?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members, either by Zoom or in the chambers. And there is no public comment.
I thank you, Dan. The next item on the evening's agenda are council members' reports and comments. Are there council members that would like to make reports this evening? Catherine.
Two things. One is I'm our representative to the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce and they held their board meeting this morning. There are some changes happening with the leadership of the Chamber of Commerce. So stay tuned for some further conversation about that when we get more information and also when we have the budget discussions. The second thing was I attended along with Councilmember Candell, the Subcommittee for Project Home Key, the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting this morning, that as you may recall, the Project Home Key organization has four subcommittees. So this one was the Public Safety and it met for an hour this morning and will be meeting once a month. The good presentation by Chief Norton, the question had been asked, well, lots of questions are being asked, but the focus of this particular meeting was about data collection and gathering current data and crime statistics and interactions with police and citizens currently. So that he, it was very helpful to me to hear that this has been well thought through with this, the previous, the current experience that Central Marin Police Authority has with the Project Casa Buena. And he's taking a lot of lessons learned there about how to assess the situation before we get residents who are living in this, in this community. And also it was nice to see that Michael Thompson, who is the Marin County Sheriff Ombudsman for unhoused people, was there and fully participating because I think many of our residents have expressed that public safety is one of the primary concerns. They want to make sure that we are looking at completely and in advance of residents being in this structure. Do you think I called that right, Scott? What do you think? Anything you want to?
Just quickly, I, I've been trying to go as many of the different subcommittees as I can, trying to get some answers. Everybody has a different takes. This is my personal take on it, but I think we still have some ways to go to get to a point where people feel comfortable. I think it's attainable, but I think some questions still need to be answered and some steps still have to be taken to make the community feel comfortable. But I think we're making progress.
Yeah, and I think the reality is we're a year out from having any residents in the, after construction. So there's time to be really duck, doing a deeper dive into many of these concerns. So we'll keep you updated as your liaisons.
Thank you very much for that report. Are there other council members that would like to make, make reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a public hearing this evening and I'll open the public hearing. Seven point one, this is a text amendment. That twenty one dash twelve, it's an introduction waiver of the first reading of an ordinance one zero five four to adopt amendments to the Rose Garden Precise Development Plan. And this is to be adopted by Resolution forty eight slash zero six, and this is continued from December the first, twenty twenty one. And April sixth, twenty twenty two. And we have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, getting me this evening for this staff report. I do want to acknowledge I've got a team in the audience to support me if you take me into too technical an area with respect to planning. This is a public hearing as the mayor indicated to consider the first reading waving, sorry, introduce and wave first reading ordinance ten fifty four, which would amend the Rose Garden Precise Development Plan and also consider a resolution that would amend the Central Larkspur Area Specific Plan, the CLASP, which we'll probably refer to consistently as the CLASP. Collectively, the documents are making one amendment to the CLASP and six amendments to the Precise Development Plan. The amendments are enumerated and discussed in detail in your staff report, which I'll incorporate here by reference. But in some, the amendments are intended to do two primary things. Probably most significantly, what's been the subject of the prior council meetings and discussions has been whether or not to modify the setback restrictions for lots twenty two through twenty nine within the Precise Development Plan. These are the lots that, but the creek on the southern part of the development and have backyards that have setback restrictions related to that creek. Currently, the setback for building impervious surfaces is set at fifty feet in the documents. The amendments that are set forth would change the setback to twenty five feet, essentially the fence lines that exist now. So there'd still be the setback on the creek side of the fence, but it would lift the building and impervious surfaces restrictions within what constitutes the backyards of these properties. At its last meeting, the council received, received an opinion from Julian Skinner, acting as your city engineer, that prior environmental analyses had sufficiently contemplated the impacts that might occur if impervious surfaces are introduced in the subject portions of these lots. That was important because the council had previously and the public had previously raised questions about whether there were, had been sufficient analysis done. And we're appreciative that Mr. Skinner was able to invest the time and resources to look at all the prior analyses collectively and reach those conclusions. And so we, I'm referencing by, I'm incorporating by reference to the remainder of this hearing that material is already provided to you. The second key thing that we wanted to accomplish with these amendments is that we'd like to bring the CLASP and the Precise Development Plan into conformance with state law and local regulations concerning by right development. Most notably, this has to do with questions we received about accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and what is or is not permissible. And as you've heard, under the state's by right provisions, these local restrictions can only apply within the constraints that are allowed. And so we wanted to make sure that the documents better reflect and tie to, to current state law and local regulations. So that's what we're trying to accomplish this evening. As you'll see in the staff report, we've set forth and made the recommendation to you that you take two actions. And the first action that we're recommending to you is to adopt the resolution, which would make changes to the CLASP. And then secondly, to introduce and weigh the first reading of ordinance ten fifty four. That said, the council has options other than to do so, you may, after reviewing this material and conducting the public hearing, you may decide that you want modifications made to one or both of these documents and you can give us direction to that effect. If you still have outstanding questions, you can continue the matter and direct us with respect to any information or analyses that you'd like to receive. And then lastly, you could opt to deny the request from the applicant for these changes and, and not pass either of these documents. With that, Mr. Mayor, staff concludes its presentation. I do believe when you open the public hearing, the representatives for the applicant are here that want to make a presentation to you. And with that, I'm available for questions. And as I said, if it gets a little beyond my planning knowledge, I'll pass the baton to one of the planners or to Mr. Woodruff here.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We will open the public hearing. And are there questions from the city council regarding the staff report? My recollection is that this is continued from a December first, twenty twenty one meeting, as well as an April sixth, twenty twenty two meeting where these matters have been discussed and reviewed by both staff and council members. My, I would have one question for Julian Skinner, the Public Works Director. Julian, would you correct me if I'm wrong, but one of my overall takeaways was that the grading design for the development project, the Rose Lane project, including the lots in question, the primary grading design takes most of the drainage within the project limits and sends it into the designed infrastructure of the street system. Is that correct?
Yeah, per the approved grading plan, the majority of the backyards were to be graded to slope towards the street. Some of them have area drains in them and some of them slope, just surface runoff to the street. There is a thin sliver. The grading plan showed what's known as a grade break just inside of the fence in the backyards. And from this grade break to the fence, the runoff actually goes towards the creek, but it was a pretty minor portion of the twenty five foot depth of the backyard.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm sorry, just a quick question, Julian, while we have you here. Do you have any concerns about adopting this resolution?
As far as while Public Works looked at, was the, the hydraulics questions that came up, there As far as while Public Works looked at, um, was the the hydraulics questions that came up, there were folks that were concerned about flooding. Um, if the backyards were to become um impervious and so. Um, from a public work standpoint, we looked at the uh drainage calculations. Um, that were approved as part of the subdivision. We find that whether the backyards are impervious or pervious, they meet all of the calculations. That were in um the documents that were used uh when the subdivision was approved. So I I don't have any concerns from a flooding standpoint, no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other council member questions regarding. This public hearing. If not, we'll open it up to the, I understand the applicants have a presentation, so we'll go to the applicants. Uh, welcome, please. Introduce yourselves and tell us where you live.
Just moving this back a little bit so I can see the presentation here. Well, Mayor, uh, members of City Council, thanks for this opportunity. Nice to see everybody or some of you face to face. And uh, thanks to Julian and Dan for their presentations and support of this uh plan amendment. Uh, my name is Chris Wheaton. I am a Larkspur resident. I've been in Rose Lane for almost from the beginning. Um, I am also a resident of one of the eight homes that borders the Larkspur Creek, so I'm an impacted resident. I serve on the HOA board and I'm just representing the eight uh creekside homeowners. We've been uh looking at this amendment for a while. We started to uh. In in terms of working with the HOA, we were having issues with. Uh, putting sort of anything that was impervious in our backyards for those first twenty-five feet. And that's gone on for the last seven years. So we're anxious to kind of make some amendments based upon information we thought was in the public record. That would um make it uh, you know, clear that if we did do something in those those twenty-foot foot setback area, that it would not impede. Um, any, any water drainage into the creek and that it would be environmentally sound uh to make this plan amendment. So. We're happy to see.
May I ask a question at this point, just of staff? Has the staff reviewed and find the presentation that we're about to see consistent with the staff recommendation? It's a question for the city manager.
Uh, well, the staff recommendation is what the applicants requested, so I I I would say the answer is yes.
Well, have you seen this presentation?
Uh, I've I've seen the printout of it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that um everybody's on the same page when we get to the end of the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Wheaton, for your patience.
Oh, sure, no problem. Um, so uh, you know, essentially, we as the eight homeowners and. We're just recommending that this uh text amendment be approved and and what this. Uh, the biggest picture level, it gives us the right to use our twenty-five foot area of the backyard that's fenced in. Um, to be able to use that for uh similar to what other residents uh in the community are able to do. This does not really impact the twenty-five foot area directly adjacent to the creek. We own that land. And we have a a special easement that doesn't basically allow us to do anything or even walk in that area. So, so I think there was some early on, some. Um, questions from the public as to whether we were changing that twenty-five foot setback area immediately adjacent to the creek. We're really talking about the immediate twenty-five feet from the back of our property to the back to the uh to the fenced area, which is. Approximately twenty-five feet in each of those backyards. So it's a fairly small area, but it has a big impact. It's, it really is our usable backyard space. Um, I'm gonna dance here. So this chart, uh, this, this slide just goes over the project site and the eight homes and and highlights the area with the creek. Uh, in the southern end of this uh picture here. It's actually the. Yeah, so so this is, this is the uh, the homes. You can see them numbered um from fifty-one Rose Lane. Um, all the way up to sixty-five Rose Lane. Um, again, the project request is, uh, we have a fifty-foot area. We're just asking that first twenty-five feet. Um, to be amended so that we can have use of that backyard space somewhere to the other Larkspur Rose Lane residents. Um, and it's just, again, the reason we're asking for this is right now, we're under this somewhat vague regulation. That we have to limit the amount of impervious surfaces. We put that back there and. Uh, that has meant that we have to have had HOA review and the cities had to review each of the projects and try to interpret that. Um, and we're trying to get those, those restrictions lifted. Um, just to clarify, uh, we're not going to be touching this upland habitat setback area. Really, uh, if if you were to look at a modern day picture of this, you'd have the first twenty-five feet enclosed by fence. And then the rest being an open area that is just right now, grass and trees. And again, we we maintain that as an HOA, but. That's fenced off uh on the other side of our fence. So it's basically area to the creek that that we don't touch or um other than for maintenance. And looking at the um, the setback area again, um, this just further uh highlights this, this area from the yellow dotted line. Which represents the fence line and the green at the back of the property. Really, that's the area we're talking about. And then the area between the yellow dotted line and the red area would be the um, the habitat area that is not being touched. I just mentioned this because there's a lot of feedback from the public on that habitat area. I think they're based upon the ordinance and lack of. Knowledge of what was going on. I think they thought we were trying to lift that restriction and and again, we are not attempting to do that at this time. And then just using one of the lots as an example, this is just showing again the green and yellow line representing the area that we're in question. And then the upland habitat um setback area for a lot twenty-seven. Um, just showing it again, another example, just to make it perfectly clear the area we're talking about. Um, again, supporting just, just mentioning the 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 work that was done. There were some questions about what the drainage would be like for this property. And I, there's basically, if you took my lot as an example, there are, there's a series of storm drains that are on either side of my property. That when it rains, those drains fill up. It's sloped down to the front of the property. It then enters into the Rose Lane's. Water treatment system, which is a Folterra system that's inspected annually. It then gets treated there and then it gets released after it's treated into the general water system. So. Um, a lot of those changes were made after the Rose Lane development went through these uh to sort of set up all these rules. Um, but there was never really a attempt to go back and then update it based upon the new drainage system. So. Again, this is just sort of a a true up that we're making after the fact, but it um. We're happy to see all the different environmental reports that support this and uh make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's for. On behalf of everyone who's looking at this from an environmental standpoint. So, and again, just to to say is I'm just speaking in in terms of uh supporting and on behalf of the creekside homeowners and. Trying to um express our, our support for the text amendment twenty-one twelve. And wanted to open up for any questions that people may have or the council may have of, of the creekside homeowners, or at least of me representing those folks.
I thank you very much. Are there questions from the council for Mr. Wheaton?
Mr. Mayor, just very, very quickly, uh, thank you for that presentation. Um, everything you said is consistent with my own understanding of what's being proposed. Um, and the review that's been undertaken with respect to the habitat uh quarter. Uh, that's obviously a a big concern of mine that that's not encroached. This proposal does not do that. So, um, I'm I'm pleased to see everybody kind of coalescing around this idea. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there other council members that have questions regarding? This text amendment and uh resolution. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this item this evening?
Raise hands from our audience members, either in person or via Zoom. And there's no public comment.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to adopt the resolution and waive the first reading of uh ten fifty-four?
Yes, you may. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd be happy to second that.
Uh, thank you much. I want to uh thank Mr. Wheaton for his thorough and helpful presentation this evening. We have a motion and a second. Uh, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Homer?
Yes. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, thank you very much to the HOA and to the homeowners who have worked so hard to see this come to pass. We appreciate your patience and your work. And thanks to the staff for helping implement the request. Uh, that's the first uh public hearing we have this evening. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we have, we'll move on to item seven point two. Which are amendments to the city of Larkspur Schedule of User and Regulatory Fees. May we please have a staff report?
Very pleased to introduce Administrative Services Director Kathy Orm, uh, who will go over the amendments to the user regulatory.
This is odd. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council Members. Um, we have tonight. We're opening a public hearing for our annual fee schedule. Normally, Terry from Clear Source is here to give a presentation, but he can't join us tonight. So I am your person. Um, so each year we do have a public hearing to review our fees. Our fees are user fees and regulatory fees, user fees being specific fees that we charge. And then regulatory fees would be cost recovery for us is mainly what's in our fee schedule. And then a future red or a resolution was done on a prior meeting to. Increase our fees by the CPI index and we use the Bay Area Index with San Francisco and Oakland. This year, that index went up three point two percent. I think we are in an inflationary period. Last year, it was like one point seven. So the fees have been uh increased by that amount for. Our fee schedule this year. And if there's any questions about the fees or about the rates that have been applied, let me know.
Sorry, just a quick question. Uh, every fee was raised by the same percentage. Is that accurate?
All the fees were raised by the same percentages except for for like deposits. Deposits stay whatever the same. So it was, so it's a matter of being able to to cover our cost as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Are there questions from the city council regarding the staff report? Are there members of the public that have questions or would like to make comments regarding the staff report this evening?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members in Zoom or in the council chambers. And there is no public comment.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for consideration of a motion. Would a council member like to make the motion uh based on the staff recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Would you please call a roll call vote?
Councilmember Kandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Thumbs up, Gabe. We have a thumbs up.
I didn't hear Vice Mayor Paulson.
Vice Mayor Paulson votes thumbs up.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Homer.
Uh, I vote yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the staff report. And Kathy, thank you very much for your work leading to this uh adoption of an amendment to the fee schedule.
I I really want to, Mr. Mayor, I did want to just acknowledge and thank Kathy for finding a consultant a few years ago. To to really look at all our fees and create a system that can be simply tied to an index. I think that's made a huge difference from how we were doing it in the past.
I would agree. Thank you very much.
I would agree with that as well. I think it's, it's, it's rational and sensible and appreciated.
And efficient.
And efficient, yes, all those things. I think rational captures efficiency, but that's okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes our public hearings this evening. We have one business, two business items. Uh, the first is the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, is a department level updates. May we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. Um, annually, we uh take you through the. Preparation and adoption of a but new budget uh across four meetings. That's been our practice now for several years. This is the fun one because this is the one where uh we get to hear how we're doing. From the leaders of the four departments that operate the city. Um, for those who've been with us in the past. Um, it'll be interesting. We haven't gotten to do this in person in a while. Sometimes we get a little playful with each other and tease each other, particularly if. One of us is too long-winded. Um, although uh, one particularly long-winded person retired. So I'll just razz him in absentia. With that said, though, uh, it it's also a chance. Uh, maybe for me to beam with a little pride at what these folks do for you and for the community. Work really hard. We set goals every year during this session. We we tell you what we're planning to set as our goals in the budget. Um, and we work very, very hard to meet those goals. So this evening, we'll talk about the accomplishments in the current fiscal year. We certainly have some things that are in process. Um, and then uh, we'll talk about what we think will be the appropriate goals for the next fiscal year. And maybe just a little bit of how we're doing. And I think this year to to keep it simple, we'll do it, uh, the departments in alphabetical order, which means administration gets to go first. Which is uh, I'm going to have Kathy come back up here. So it's gonna be me. I'll start and then pass the baton to Kathy. Because we sort of jointly manage the administration side of the house. Um, and so in particular, I tend to work with Allison Fallis, the city clerk. And with Shannon O'Hara, the Assistant City Manager, to do not just my responsibilities as city manager. Uh, but also to guide um. All of the outreach that we do, a lot of the engagement in general with the public that we do, a lot of the management of records. Uh, those types of things all fall into the administrative part of the operation and within our general uh area. So um, this year, a lot of what we've done is continue to adapt as we go now. From having been a virtual operation to a hybrid operation and trying to figure out exactly what that is. Still getting all the kinks out. I noticed today the the zooming's been a little laggy, so we got to figure out what's going on there. Uh, but we'll get there. Um, the other thing is I want to acknowledge that Allison's been the leader in-house. In continuing to reduce the number of paper records that are in this building, getting a lot more of that digitized. Uh, I'm excited to note that I know Allison's had as a goal to move us more and more paperless. And Elise told me that's one of her immediate goals for the Community Development Department is to move them increasingly paperless. And a lot of the investment we've been making in technology will let us do that. You already heard this evening from Shannon that uh we just want to continue to bolster and improve our communication program. Um, I think I've mentioned before, Mill Valley did a survey several years back and asked their community, well. How would you like us to communicate with you? Um, it was both a good and bad question to ask on the, um, you know, the good news is they got a lot of feedback. The bad news is they found out there's fifteen different ways their community wanted the city to engage them. Um, we've been hesitant to ask that question, so we don't actually have a specific fifteen communication point list. But I I think we're up to seven or eight at this point, so. Um, and we're making all those tools work. And as you heard Shannon during her communication presentation says. Uh, we're bringing somebody on board to just take us that next step, so uh, pretty excited about doing that. Um, with that, I am going to turn. With that, I am going to turn it over to Kathy, who's going to talk about the rest of the administration's department. And then we could certainly answer any questions you have about goals and objectives.
Well, our little finance department of three people do run three different agencies out of there. We do Larkspur and Central Marin Police Authority and the RV Paramedic Authority. And we're a dual tight-knit group and we don't have a lot of building to do and a lot of things to show because we kind of do a lot of stuff in the background. But we do keep things floating and we are to also trying to go paperless. I don't think that finance can ever go a hundred percent paperless, but we're trying. We started out by putting people on electronic time cards, so we don't have paper time cards anymore. We are implementing like payroll is probably ninety-nine percent ACH payments, so we're not printing out checks. And then we are working on that on the accounts payable side. They're going to do. It's a little bit of different process. It's taking a little bit longer to implement. Most of the invoices that we're getting in are now being emailed in, so we're trying. It's a, our auditors are also helping us because they have a share point that we use to download information. So a lot of it is already in PDF form. So we are trying to do our paperless and being better at that as well. That is one of our goals and it's an ongoing goal that I see going for a long time for us. Another one of my goals is also to, every year it is to have a clean audit. But auditors are there to look and find things, so I think we do a pretty good job of having little findings that mean there are a lot of transactions, so they're there to look and they're there to find and make recommendations. For as far as a disaster preparedness for our department, we do, we've learned to work remotely. But if, one of my philosophies for the department is not one person in the department should be able to hold it hostage. So if one person is out for whatever reason, we can still function and we should can get people paid. We can get invoices going. So there was a lot of cross-training with that, but what happens if we really have a disaster and Dan has to come in and run payroll? Or run checks or do something to keep it floating? We have now, we're having, putting together manuals, so anybody can walk in and actually run something from our department. So the finances can continue and the city can continue to run without, without us for a little while. And then lastly, I'd have to say the federal government has made us all jump through many, many hoops for this federal money. And one of my calls is not to make sure I am always on time and I get all of their requirements done so we can receive our money and we can make the reporting correctly. So other than that, that's where I, our little department is rolling. Questions where?
I'm going to offer a few goals that I want to make the council aware of that relate to the budget. And first off, we continue to invest in a lot of technology in our administration. If somebody were looking at our budget for the last three to four years, it would look like the administration budget exploded. A lot of that's the technology investment. The other thing is we moved some positions from other departments and consolidated them under administrations. That's why you'll see that increase. This year, we're going to ask the council's tolerance to do one more significant increase than embarrass Kathy a little bit. But, you know, all of us have some time in our horizon where we hope to be doing other things in our lives. And I told the council that one of the goals for the city manager is to do better succession planning. And so I've asked all employees in the city to be as honest as they can about what their general goals are. And I learned a difficult lesson with the Community Development Department, which is it does not work to Band-Aid your way through while you're trying to find a new person. And so we're going to program into the budget to actually hire another manager in the finance division so that there's overlap for a significant period of time between Kathy and her potential successor. And so that kind of hints that Kathy has started to think about what's next for her, what path she's going to take. We don't want her to do that, but she signaled she's going to do that and she should. So the time's ripe to really start looking out into the future. And I think the community will be much better served when we have these opportunities, particularly at some of our positions that we just can't function without to build overlap in whenever possible. So the budget has a larger-than-usual staffing component when we bring it to you for administration. And that's part of the reason that it's there. Sorry, Kathy, embarrassed a little bit. And then the other thing that I think you'll see us doing in this next year that I think will make a big difference for the community is we want to see if we can make the Planning Commission go hybrid as well, or facilitate, I should say. I think they want to do that. And so we'll be having the city clerk's office providing more services to the Planning Commission than they have in the past to help facilitate that and help the planning staff focus on the material. And so the new person we're bringing on board will also be getting some cross-training to be able to back up the city clerk from time to time. For our other boards and commissions, it'll be a mixed bag, but we have a goal there to just kind of keep improving and enhancing the way we provide services to each of those boards and commissions. And so I think you'll be seeing more coming out of the administration department this year. And so one of our goals is really to up the standards that we apply as we serve each of those boards and commissions and offer them a cleaner and clearer path to make sure they're compliant with the council's directions in terms of the way to operate in the Brown Act. So, of course, we all don't know if the Brown Act's going to continue to be tweaked so that it can better facilitate hybrid meetings. Right now, we're all a little uncertain about that. So that will open it up to questions about the administration function. Again, this is just sort of a lighter meeting, not intended to be the deep dive that the rest of the budget will do. And we know in administration that while we think we're the most important, we don't have all the sexy cool projects that some of the other departments are going to talk about when they come forward.
That's not true. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I hear you are. Can I make a comment?
Dan, you're muted.
Sorry, Scott, please.
All right, thanks. I am not one to get a lot of compliments, but I just want to say financially, we came out of COVID smelling like roses and you did a phenomenal job. And I just want to say thank you that we, we appreciate, we acknowledge it and appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, but I also have to say thank you to council because without your help and support on what we saw coming or potentially coming that in being conservative, we wouldn't have come out as well as we did.
Thank you, Fest. I like that.
Councilmember Way?
Thank you, Kathy, for that presentation. I just wanted to comment that I think our investment in technology has really paid off well. When I first was elected in two thousand thirteen, our budget book was pretty rudimentary looking. I think it really has reached a level of professionalism that I really appreciate as somebody without a background in finance with the graphics, the charts, the visuals and the ways that you describe our budgetary, our budget, I think is a very helpful tool. And I think this investment in that technology and in that software was probably one of the best things for the community also, who can have an easier reference tool to see what our finances are. So I'll continue to support if we need to continue to upgrade our our technology infrastructure because I think it really shows a greater quality product.
I have to chime in that in two thousand thirteen, that was one of our last years in our old system. Our old financial software ran in DOS, for those who remember what DOS is, and had to be on a dedicated machine and could only print to a dot matrix printer. So then we had to take all that information and type it into Excel and Word so we could produce something that was readable for the council. And we, I think, often just handed you a big stack of the dot matrix printouts as extra attachments. So we've come a long way in nine years, that's for sure.
Thank you very much. Are there other council members that have questions regarding administration?
Mr. Mayor, just very briefly.
Yes, please.
Everyone's been complimenting Kathy and it's well deserved. You know, I've been around here for a while and the work that you've done and your team has done. Because you have a small team and you do a lot is impressive. And very much appreciated. I always like to pay attention to what auditors do. And as long as I've been here, you've always made sure their expectations are met. And that is something terrific. But for goals and expectations, I have to share a brief anecdote. My spouse is contemplating retirement herself. So we've been going through this discussion about what that all means. And she works for a large law firm based in San Francisco and still has to do with a lot of the bureaucracy that's associated with large law firms, setting goals and objectives. And how are you going to do this and that? And what are your future expectations and things like that? And the conversation we have is the expectation is I'm going to retire. That's my goal. And we will miss you when and whenever that happens, and I don't want to encourage you to do it too quickly. But it, your role has been invaluable and I just want to express that appreciation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the support. But I also have to say, you know, with the admin group itself, Allison, Shannon, I mean, we don't do it alone. Dan, Dan's like leader of the group and we all work together, so.
Yeah, but he gets complimented all the time, so.
Take it back. It's the rest of us, Allison and Shannon and Kathy and Maria, Jennifer and.
Amplify the sentiments of appreciation. Dan?
I just, I want to finish with one story that sort of illustrates how much attention to detail Kathy and her finance team put into things. Kathy makes sure her two staff people that are the ones crunching a lot of the day-to-day paperwork are constantly up to speed on rules and regulations. And so this year, it turned out our, our person who processes payroll went to seminar or webinar and heard about IRS regulations and took it upon herself to spend the better part of a day or two researching all sorts of things in our payroll and came to us with essentially a self-audited list of things that weren't being done exactly the way the IRS is saying they want them done. And if you're listening, IRS, we fixed everything, so. It's that sort of attention to detail and immediately jumping on the problem. I mean, I think within hours of Kathy and her team understanding what needed to be fixed, they're asking me for direction on a couple of key things that we don't let things languish. And I think that's actually one of the most admirable goals that Kathy constantly sets for herself and her department is that nothing languishes, so that's how you stay afloat. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Not a super user. If not, we'll move on, please.
So I said we do it in alphabetical order this year, so community development is up next. And I think we're bringing Elise back on screen and she's going to do a little PowerPoint. And I will supplement if necessary for my brief stint as the interim community development director. But I think Elise has done more to accomplish the goals in her week and a half than I managed to pull off in three months. So, Elise, I'm going to give it to you right now.
Elise will spare you of the roasting we had planned for you, predecessor.
Thank you. I wanted to start with some statistics for the twenty twenty-one calendar year. And the Larkspur Community Development Department had a record year for building permits in twenty twenty-one with an eighteen percent increase in permits over twenty twenty. And the planning department received fifty-three percent, or sorry, fifty-three applications enacted on over thirty at the Planning Commission and zoning administrator level. One notable project the staff mentioned to me was a renovation and addition at Nine Murray Lane, which is a historic structure. Grab my power cord. The city approved a handful of new housing units and addressed a number of code enforcement cases. The department saw changes with the retirement of Neil Toft after twenty-one and a half years of service. And we've filled an administrative assistant position and are hoping to have the open building official and planner positions filled before the end of this fiscal year. Staff is setting up the new permit software E-Track It and is working towards launching the online permit portal before July. And staff has been working on scanning the final department files. I wanted to give you and staff credit for several community development department-related projects for this fiscal year. Staff is working towards bringing the twenty forty general plan to the council, including public release of the environmental impact report. You declared a climate emergency and adopted a new climate action plan. You kicked off the update of the Larkspur housing element. The city gave some permit renewal fee relief to applicants who had permits expired due to COVID nineteen. You participated in the county's public process for the project Home Key Site. And finally, the city council adopted an interim urgency ordinance implementing new state law SB nine and established regulations for subdivision of sites and multifamily development and single-family zoning districts. For goals for this year, you have several big projects already underway that we seek to complete this year. We'll be working towards having a housing element adopted prior to the January twenty twenty-three deadline.
And I'll think of advance that time, Elise.
Oh, thank you. Am I going in the wrong direction? Here we go. We'll be working towards having a housing element adopted prior to the January twenty twenty-three deadline. We're bringing forward new building standards for adoption. We're working on objective design and development standards for multifamily developments. And the city will be considering revisions to its inclusionary housing fees and policy, which is a collaborative project with the County of Marin and other Marin jurisdictions. And on this topic, the county is going to be having or helping us arrange for a listening session with developers on the inclusionary housing fees and requirements on April twenty-seventh at eleven AM. So if anyone would like to participate in that or want more information, they could contact me. And then finally, we're going to be bringing a standard ordinance to implement the new state housing law SB nine to the Planning Commission and the Town Council. And that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It was a great job for your first presentation, I might say. Are there council member questions for Elise? Councilmember Way?
Welcome, Elise. I've only heard glowing things about you from local developers who I know, so they're thrilled you're going to be here. My question is, I think your department did a lot with the Commons Foundation also in the strategy and planning for the new library and community center. So we met, we've met regularly with the city manager. And I just think you should include that in your list of accomplishments too, because now that the, now that the the state grant is put forward, this may be a project that we're fingers crossed we'll be working on. But it has been something that's been actively engaged with the city and the Commons to work on that. So I don't know, I think it falls under your category, but I think that's something, an accomplishment that we should also recognize.
Just to clarify, the application for the state grant? Other council member questions for community development director? Thank you very much, Elise. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there is no public comment.
Thank you so much, Elise.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you on the streets.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just join in, Elise has got a a big job ahead of her. There is a lot of work still to be done on planning issues. And we're just very grateful to have you here to carry this forward on that.
Indeed. All right.
You know, so who's next? Before we move on, Mr. Mayor, I was struck by council member ways comments about the work on the library. For the for this department, one of the challenges that. The city will always face is you're reliant on whoever's fuzzy memory is being in play to have to remember what happened before. What was what we lost when Neil Toft retired is that between the two of us. We could compare our fuzzy memories and usually figure out what probably happened. But with him gone, you're entirely reliant on me to remember every single part of this process since I came on board. So I may have to call him from time to time just to compare notes.
I think the point of that was good luck.
So with that, our next department is community services. So that's our two division department of library and recreation. And it's Franklin Escobedo who's coming to the.
Welcome, Franklin.
Thank you. So I'd just like to thank you for for being here. This is our second year as a community. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The community services department, this was the combination of recreation and the library together. So the first accomplishment we were really happy about was the reorganization and staffing changes. So the assistant community services director, access services librarian, which you guys all approved and now they're in place. We have also had, we finally had a community service assistant brought on board and we had. Some more changes that will help us bring both divisions together with staffing with our library aid and recade. They can go back and forth between the divisions. So so we'll start with the library division. The one of the our first accomplishments was reopening to the public. We first started with two days and we've moved to three days and we're hoping in the next fiscal year to be open all five days as the public again. We had started off with limited capacity. So we had, you know, for a while, we only had 20 people who could come into the building and then we went up to to full capacity now. We've also continued to do our virtual programs online. We've still been very cautious about bringing programming back inside because of children are still not be able to back to be vaccinated. And this was a caution that we both for both recreation and the library. So we're hoping that as we move forward, those things will also. Come to pass and we can have back our two are in person programming like we used to. But we're planning for some new stuff outside that we'll be able to do in the new summer and coming up soon. Um, we also began to offer it Chromebooks and hotspots to the public so they could be checked out. So giving internet access to the public who couldn't come into the library. We've also got the hold it locker installed, so it's in the back right now and our soft opening is being used. And soon as we get the press release out, we're sure it's going to become a very, very popular. Item because we're the only library in Marin that has something like this. So if you, I'm sure you've all seen it outside, it's a little blue locker with lights. It's been the patrons who've used it so far have been very happy with it. And every time we talk about it, more and more patrons are using it and calling us to use it. So um, the other big one we did was the RFID conversion. This is a radio frequency ID for the material. This will allow for faster checkouts for patrons. So you just stack your books on the little pad, check them all out at once. So no more scanning in each book or popping up in the DVDs like people have been doing for the last years. So that that will speed up process. And then our one big accomplishment was applying for the state grant with the help of the city manager and Julian from Bookworks. We got the application in on time and now we're just fingers crossed that we're going to get that. So so the next part is into recreation. So we successfully restarted our super cool summer school last year and kinder camp, which was last August. So we got those go up and going again. We've continued to, we continue renting our facilities out throughout the this fiscal year. And we've increased it by now opening up the gym so and the community room that's at the recreation office. So those are all being rented again. We've begun offering youth lessons in tennis and for youth and adults. So those programs are starting to go up again. And then we also restarted our youth theater. Their first program was High School Musical. So that was one of the first programs. So we got those programs up and going. And then this our big one that Dan has already mentioned earlier today was our successful East of Holiday Egg Hunt. I keep saying I felt wrong. I'm always getting corrected. It's our holiday egg hunt. It was a really great partnership with Port of Adia. And this was one of the first years, usually one staff will do it, but this year both staffs got together to do it. Because like you said, we had eggs from when we were planning to do it last year. So but we're hoping to get, when we get back to full capacity, we'll have the nighttime egg hunt that people have. We've had a lot of people asking, we didn't do it this year, but we're hoping to have that back next year. And then for our goals for the next fiscal years, we're going to start the planning process for beginning a strategic plan that will really help. Plan future programming and events for the community services department. And that looks at both the recreation side and the library side to provide services to find out what services our residents want and need. And so giving us a strategic plan will help us move the whole department together and both divisions within it. To have services that we can have that people want to come to. And then it will make us stand out from the rest of the libraries in the area. So we're going to continue to synchronize our staffing between having the flow back and forth between recreation and the library. That will help out in tough times and when we're busy. So we'll be able to have staff go back and forth during the busy hours and slow times too. So we're working on that. Where the plan is, like you said, to open up five days a week. Once we have full staff and again, we're in the process of hiring a new librarian. And then we're hoping to get the recreation office back open so people could come for in person visits. Because we do have people who still like to come in to apply for lots of various stuff of like picnic tables. We, that was one of the big things too. We automated the picnic reservation process and that has been working really well. People have been reserving their picnic tables online so they can do that. And so that was one thing we had been working on for a while, but it's now up and going. And so if you want to rent a picnic table, you just visit our website and you can rent one. Um, we are continuing to build our relationships and rebuild our relationships with the school districts. Since we have new staff and there's there's new staff on their site as well. We want to make sure that we build a better and stronger relationship for both the library and recreation so we can offer programming. We're also, once we get back and going next year to have more after school programs at the school. Because that has been a big ask as well. And then we're just hoping to expand. That our program, all of our programming back to pre-COVID levels. So we're just, the COVID thing has been the big barrier for us and it's what made us very move slowly. Much slower than we really wanted to every time we thought we were getting to that. It's over, something happened. So so that's it. We're looking forward to the future and we're hopefully we'll have lots of stuff that you guys want to come visit and see.
Thank you very much. I have a question and this might involve others. When they, you're we're using the word community services, which which is the trigger for me to ask this question. When we came into acquisition of the community facilities parcel. I believe one of the. Underpinning goals for the. Use of that property, regardless of what public facilities. Land there or land will land there is that that property really needs to tie together. How we, as the city of Larkspur respond in a disaster. And that by that, I mean, the new facility needs to bring new networks together for. Information for public information. Some of that was described earlier this evening in the engagement presentation. Some of the things regarding infrastructure need to be brought into discussion here. I'm just, and I'm just wondering, Franklin, have you had any cross department discussions about? How that property should begin to start programming? Communications and information. And a question for Dan too. Have these, have any general conversations started to take place about how? We bring together emergency information in a new library, community center facility. I hear people talking about the facility as a community center and recreation center and a library. But I believe in the 21st century, this needs to be. A place where people in a disaster would arrive on site and there would be a hotspot that would provide. The ability to gather public information in a secure way. Or at least an easy to access way, starting with that new facility on that property. I'm just asking Franklin a question. I'll be asking others this evening. Have any general conversations taken place about how all this comes together?
We sort of incorporated that into our application. To make sure that we had a place that we had power during power outage. Right now, we have a couple of spots that we did that, but they're not large enough. And when we COVID hit, we really couldn't use what places we had to accommodate the public in a larger space. So that is something we have incorporated into. The application that we submitted to the grant. I mean, it is something that I'm very aware of that we are an information center. We've been working slowly with admin services to make sure that we are. Marketing and sending out the same messages to our social media. So the library had some social media that was a sort of rogue before I got here that we tried to push all back under one umbrella. So we're sort of making sure that we're getting the messaging now. And I'm sure that once we get something there, we'll have better communications between police and fire. We do talk, but we really have, I mean, something that's part of, I think, our strategic plan as well is to make sure that we incorporate that kind of detail. Because I know that even the commons who who we're going to be working with and Amir Catherine and who've been coming to the meetings. That is still something we have in the background is that it is a community place. And I've always believed that libraries are community centers, no matter what. We provide a place for the community to come and gather. And I've obviously been one of those champions that we're the information place too. We want to make sure that you can come here and get good and accurate information. So that's part of our plan and our future plan. But I know as we get closer to it, natural, hopefully, reality of it, we'll have better conversations between all the department heads. But we're a good team and right now our communications is working well. And I think it would work well too in the disaster too, because we are all disaster services workers as well.
I thank you. I'll look forward to seeing how all that translates into budgets and. It'll be a significant element. Thank you. Now, Kath- Katherine Way.
You know, I sit on the on the County Disaster Council as the MCC MC representative. And this is a conversation about a public use, public. Buildings and structures and which ones could be used for care and mass mass shelter, which ones for care and mass feeding. For warming shelters, for places to charge cell phones with if there's a power shortage, power outage. So this is really a countywide organized. Through Office of Emergency Services and other areas in which they're looking at these particular types of community structures and their function and use. So when this building gets built, it will also be factored into that inventory, I'm sure. And as a newer structure, it probably would have a lot of safeguards for that. So but we have a police station right down the street, which is already classified as a place for. For sheltering for people and for information gathering too. So I think we need to factor it in. I would like to just mention something about your presentation. Are you ready? I think you missed one thing that I'd like you to be complimented on. And that is, I think you have done a terrific job at collaborating with the three eight. The three entities that have been supportive of the library over the years. The Commons Foundation, the Friends of Library and the Library Foundation. I think I've seen for the first time, really opportunities where they they are sharing ideas with each other in better ways. They're communicating their materials with each other. And I think I I credit a lot of that work to you and to really understand, trying to understand the culture and the history of those. Different organizations and how they work. There's often been friction. And I think it's been important that you spent a lot of time to try to understand the backstory of some of of these. Different groups and then really in my. In in my estimate, have spent a lot of time trying to create more crossover and collaboration. So I think that's the only way we're going to move forward with so much of what we need to do. And I appreciate you doing that, Franklin, very much. So.
Thank you.
Yes, we all echo that appreciation. Are there council member questions for Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, no, no questions, just an expression of thanks for the hard work that you have been doing. And I don't know what we do without you, quite honestly. So thank you.
Yeah, I also want to just amplify our appreciation of your leadership, your energy and creativity during the pandemic. I just think it's been remarkable what. The library and Recreation Department have been able to keep going during that time.
So Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I wonder if you'd indulge me in a few minutes to comment more specifically to your inquiry. Because it's actually very timely with the public meeting we held yesterday. Where we talked to the community about disaster preparedness and infrastructure issues. And so I want to be clear. No one, first of all, Darty has become sort of. The corridor that we envision as where people should go. And I'm really pleased that one of the things I think you'll hear from Julian Skinner and his presentation cells might be stealing a little bit of his thunder is. We've, we're, we've worked with PG&E to underground all the wires on Darty, make it a safer place of passage in a disaster. But there is no facility and that includes when we build this new library. There's no one facility on Darty that can serve as the be all location for for disaster response. No facility is going to be sufficient because they're all modest size. So I think the answer to your question is. Through me, all the departments are engaged with Central Fire and Central and Police. On a campus style approach to disaster response and resiliency. And we need to have a number of facilities that are ready to provide different types of services. And the heavy demonstration of our inadequacy at the moment is when we had the public safety power shut offs. Because we tried to do almost everything out of the community room at Central Marine Police. And that room was inadequate to be the everything. The new building will be a critical part of this. It'll definitely be a safe shelter, a clean air facility, which I think clean air facility is actually a huge need in our community. When we're faced with regional wildfire and air quality challenges. I actually think the key missing component that you're going to hear staff talk more and more about is investment in Hall Middle School Gym. We have, we are partial managers of Hall Middle School Gym through our Recreation Division. We help maintain the gym. We help pay for its upkeep. It is a facility that needs to also serve a key role and it needs some definite infrastructure investments. So that it can be part of this picture because you need buildings that can stay online if the power's down. You need buildings that can. Provide people with a shelter if necessary. And you need places where staff can operate to engage the public. So I think the community room at Central Marine Police is already positioned to be part of this campus approach. I think when we build the new facility, it'll be part of this campus approach. But I want to keep emphasizing that I think Hall Middle School Gym needs to be part of this picture. We went to PG&E when they were talking about offering grant money. To invest in infrastructure locations around the county to serve as community centers in times of need. Particularly when the power would be off. And unfortunately, it didn't check all the boxes for PG&E, so it wasn't selected. I still think it's critical. And so, yes, we are talking about these issues, but I don't think we will put all our eggs in any one basket. I think you're going to see us, oh, there's my reference to the Easter egg hunt, sorry, the holiday. But so that's my answer. We are having those discussions. And I think you'll be hearing us talk more and more about how all our facilities can play a role. And I think you'll be hearing us talk more and more about how all our facilities can play a role. And we probably need to have a good way to pitch a tent in Piper Park if things come to to be. So we'll work on that, too.
I thank you, Dan, for that information. Anything else before we move on? Are there any members of the public that would have questions at this time?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Okay, let's move on.
So our fourth department to present this evening is our Department of Public Works. So I I've been struck as Julian comes up to the to the mic. We we've reorganized and rebranded some of our departments over the last few years. So I think Julian is the first department head who's going to talk, whose title is actually on his placard, because everybody else has their own title.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of public, Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. So I do have a quick slideshow presentation here because we do have some pictures of new bridges and new sidewalks and some old storm drains to to share with you. So I'm going to go over so quick highlights, just what the Public Works Department is, what we look after, and then the accomplishments for this current fiscal year, as well as our goals for next. So as you know, we primarily look after the city's infrastructure. That's your street drainage utilities. That includes most of the things on the street, other than the water and the sewer, for which there are separate districts, but retaining walls, signs, traffic signals and storm drains. We also look after the city's buildings, City Hall Railroad Building, and then the parks, the big Regional Park, Piper Park, and the mini parks. We're split into two operation divisions, engineering, which looks after the big projects, the new works, kind of one-time things. We have two engineers on staff, a technician, two analysts and an inspector that we're currently using the contract services for. And then on the maintenance house to the side, they look after the day-to-day, the routine operations. There's four maintenance workers, four maintenance ones and two maintenance worker twos. So I started to put together a list here of of accomplishments. And then I got to a certain point and decided I wanted to do it a slightly different way. So what I did was I went back and looked at where we were when we came to you a year ago. And I stood here and said, here's what I want to do in 21, 22. So now I'm going to show you the same slides with an update on kind of a report card as far as how well we did and how many of those projects we were able to get through and where we're at. So the first thing we said was we were going to do the Doherty Drive Rule 20 undergrounding project that the city manager mentioned. So that project did start. It's about 75% complete. All of the new pipes are underground. Excuse me. And so now the next step is all of the utilities come in one by one, and they put their new conductors in those conduits underground. As soon as they're all in and tested, then they come by one by one and take their lines off the poles. And the interesting thing about that is because they're joint poles, the rule is whoever is the last utility to take their wires off the pole is responsible for then removing the pole. So I would say it's a race to come and get their stuff off the pole. But from what I from what I'm told, AT&amp;T always loses that race for some reason. So so that's the Doherty Underground Project, which, as we mentioned, will remove all of the overhead utility poles, utility wires from Doherty, making it a better evacuation route. We don't have to worry about downlines blocking that collector road. Measure B Group Three paving project, that was last summer's paving project, that's 100% complete and paved out. This next one hit a little bit of a hiccup, not to blame Caltrans for everything. But because the city's portion of East Sir Francis Drake goes under the freeway and then goes to the Shell Station near Aliso. The portion that goes under the freeway, even though it's the City of Larkspur's responsibility to pave and maintain, it's in Caltrans right of way. And so we need a Caltrans permit to do that work. And so that permit took so long that we weren't able to get it out to bid last year. One of the reasons is because of the traffic volumes on East Sir Francis Drake, we want to pave this at night. And there are certain temperature requirements to doing asphalt work at night. And by the time we got our Caltrans permit last year, the nights were too cold to be able to pave, so that's why we've pushed it. And it's actually, you awarded a contract to Gelotti Brothers for that project. So we're anticipating they'll start in about a week or two, repaving all of East Sir Francis Drake from basically where the county's recent Sir Francis Drake project left off all the way through to Rema Lard Park. That's the limit of the city's responsibility. Then this next project, and this is the one you're seeing a photo of here, these are new storm drain pipes out in the Hillview neighborhood. So this was a project that was funded by Flood Zone Nine. So this replaces a lot of the older storm drains in Hillview. And rather than now them all going different ways and ending up in four separate discharges to Corder Madera Creek, they're all consolidated and brought into one bigger pipe that now goes to a pump station that's part of the Bon Air Bridge project. So all those pipes are in, the streets were all repaved in Hillview after the pipes were in. We have about this much piping left to do to connect the storm drain pipe that we put in Hillview to the pump station. And we're not going to do that until we finish the Bon Air Bridge project. Because technically, that's still a project under construction, and the contractor on the bridge project is still responsible for the pump station. So we brought everything all the way up to the pump station. And when the bridge is finished, we'll make that final connection. But the the neighborhood still drains, it'll still back drain through the old pipes until we make that final connection. What a lot of you saw right out front and what the photo of here is this first item was we proposed to do the Magnolia ADA improvement. So we completely removed all of the sidewalks on Magnolia between King King and Ward, and then repaved the street. And we were able to fit in some other amenities, too. There's trees that have been planted. The tree grates are not here yet. They're stuck on a barge somewhere, but the tree grates will be here. That'll finish out that project as well as the benches. There's a handful of benches that will go in along the corridor also. And then the next item is the Bon Air Bridge. So the goal for this year was to finish the south side of the bridge and open it up to traffic. And that's where we're at right now. The bridge, the structure of the bridge itself is 100% complete. The bridge deck is there, the sidewalks are there, the railings are there to protect the pedestrians from the traffic on the bridge. And then between the creek and the sidewalk, the streetlights are up on the bridge. But there's still a K-rail because they're going through and they're doing some finish work, touching up the railings. And they still have to do some final grinding on the bridge deck. But the bridge itself is 99% complete. And now the focus over the next month and a half or so is all of the access, the Bon Air Road and out to South Aliso and then to Magnolia on the other end. We've got those approaches to repave and finish out the irrigation. Unfortunately, we can't put most of the landscaping in because of the drought restrictions, but we're still going to go ahead and put the irrigation in because it's federally funded. So we're getting 90, 90% of it funded. So we're going to go ahead and put the irrigation in and then wait for a better time to do plantings. We'll do some minimal planting, like trees with the planter bags. But at the moment, we're prohibited from doing new plantings that use irrigation. And then the next item here is another one that's going to continue into next year. This is the construction of the five Bon Air Bridge mitigation projects. Again, this project is into Caltrans, it's been into Caltrans, they need to bless it. They actually need to send it to FHWA, to the Federal Highway Administration, because they control the federal funding. So it needs to go through the channels, and then we get a piece of paperwork back from Caltrans that says you're good to go, go out to bid. And then you, as a council, have already blessed the plan. So as soon as we get the go-ahead from council, we'll be turning around and advertising that for construction. And again, that's fixing our two public docks at Bon Air Landing Park and the one next to Marin Rowan Club. And then it's also creating a new dog park in Piper Park next to the police station. And then converting where the dog park is now back into a tidal and tidal tidal marsh, which it was originally before the dog park was built. And then it also includes some clean water enhancements on Magnolia to clean the storm water before it gets into the creek. And then the next item here, we did some park improvements this year. At Piper Park, we installed some shade structures for some of the popular picnic table areas that weren't near trees. And then we also finally installed the second vol- or we upgraded the second volleyball court. So some years ago, there there have been two volleyball courts at Piper Park, and one of them was upgraded with professional-grade volleyball sand. And just the one court was done, and it was pretty much became the only court that was used. And so it was been a goal for quite some time to upgrade the other court to match the first court. And so that was finally done this year, too. Some other goals we had, here's another one that we've talked about quite a lot. And for various reasons, it's not quite where it should be, but we're going to make a strong effort this coming year to to get this completed is the inspection and inventory of our storm drains. You can see by the photo here, it's not what a storm drain is supposed to look like. There's only about half of it left. This was a serviceable storm drain that was pulled out of the ground, and that's what was left of it. So we need to complete our inspection of the rest of the storm drains in the city and then come up with a plan for how we're going to repair or replace them. The next project is replacing all of the streetlight bulbs in town with energy-efficient LED fixtures. So the consultant has already finished their inventory. They've been to all of the streetlights throughout the city. They have an inventory of the wattage of those lights and so forth. And right now, they're putting together a proposal for what bulbs, what LED bulbs they would use to replace those. And so when they come back and we review those, we'll give them the go-ahead. And then they will move forward with replacing all of those bulbs throughout town. We've actually been doing this on a smaller scale for quite some time. Anytime a streetlight is burned out in the city, since I've been here over the last five years, we don't put old-style bulbs anymore. We've gone ahead and put a new LED bulb in its place. So there are some of these mixed throughout town where they've burned out over the last five years. But this will go through and replace all of the ones in the city. That reduces our energy costs moving forward, and it also reduces our maintenance costs. We get a lower, a lower fee from our maintenance contractor, because these bulbs typically are last longer than traditional bulbs. And then this next item that Elise mentioned before, we've been working with building and planning. We do issue encroachment permits through the city software that we're working on. So there've been a lot of behind-the-scenes work by our permit technician, Scott Mecho, and our engineer, Alvin Tan. I've been working with Elise's team on getting the data in and getting the software where it needs to be so it can go live. It's going to have a public interface, too. It's going to make it easier for folks to use. We're in the testing phase now, so I've marked this at about 75% complete. I don't know if we have a launch date yet, but it's definitely a lot of work has gone into it. Then the next one is, we were looking for funding to complete the Doherty Safe Pathways Project. This picture here is the Phase One that we built a few summers ago. We've been looking for funding. We did manage to find about 65% of the funding that we needed through a transportation for Clean Air grant. And so we put that money together with some local funds. And we, on your consent calendar tonight, you approved the plans to complete this path in front of Redwood High School, as well as paving Doherty and installing some buffered bike lanes. And then the next item is as we move into the last year, pretty much of our Measure B paving plan, and we have all of our streets paved out, we want to show you what it's going to look like moving forward to maintain those streets. We've just paved them all. They're in great condition, as I'll show you in a minute. But we can't just sit on that. We don't want to wait 10 years for them all to fail or 20 years, want to be proactive and maintain that investment. So here's a couple of snapshots that show data on where our streets are at. And so the top one is a PCI graph, so it shows from 2016 through to 2021 what our PCI is. That's a grade zero to 100 of where our streets are. It shows that it started out as a 43, we're now up at a 76, so we've made a lot of progress. The bottom left shows each one of these columns is from good roads to bad roads. And so what this shows is that now 60% of our streets are at a PCI of 90 or better after the first three years of our paving program. And then the graph at the right is what you're going to see moving forward as we come back to you with our plans for maintaining the pavement. Is that with the local funds that come in to maintain our pavement, we think that we're going to land at about an 85 or so PCI moving forward, even after five years removed from all of the work that we will just done. So quickly, the goals, we do have some carryover tasks that I touched on from the goals for this year, completing the door, getting the utilities to complete the Doherty undergrounding work, getting East Sir Francis Drake paved, the mitigation projects, getting our storm drain inspections, the streetlight conversion, and then working on the pavement maintenance plan. We have three new Measure B paving projects this summer. Magnolia Avenue is already out to bid. That'll pave Magnolia from city limit to city limit, other than the two blocks that we just paved with the ADA project. Doherty Drive will be completely paved from Lucky to Magnolia, along with those bicycle and pedestrian improvements that I mentioned to you. And then we'll also have our final group project, which will be South Aliso, plus a lot of the streets that are just south of downtown Montavista, West Baltimore, those streets. That'll be going up to bid later this summer. So that's the last major Measure B paving project. We have a couple of streets that fell out because of other projects that need to come out that will bump to next street, but next year. But 98% of the streets will be done by the end of the summer. Some other CIP projects I didn't touch on, Upper Elm Pathway, Phase Two of our crosswalk improvements. We did Phase One this year. We want to improve the inlet gates at the Larkspur Marina. They don't function very well, and they causes a lot of work on the maintenance side. Whenever we have storm events, to raise and lower the level of that lagoon is very cumbersome, the way the gates are now. We've got improvements planned at Doliver and Nevin Park. Both of those are primarily funded with private donations that we were able to secure. And then the Parkway Storm Drain is another project that is going out to bid after you approved it on your consent calendar tonight. So I've gone through all of this, and I haven't even touched on City Hall or the library yet, which are huge projects in themselves. So we don't quite know what the next test tasks are. Hopefully, for the library, it's getting the grant and starting to work on what that building will look like. We know we have some community conversations ahead of us about this building and City Hall and and where it should be. We're also working on a shared services agreement. We have an agreement with Mill Valley to use an inspector or a construction manager. We'd like to set up our own agreement. We have a great engineering staff. We have a whole lot of projects that are going on now. We'd like to set it up so that if there's some ebbs and flows in the in the workload, we don't lose that staff. So we'd like to set up some shared services agreements so that we're able to share those services with other agencies as the need, the need may arise in the future. And then another project that's unfunded that we're looking for funding for, that we'll be searching the grants this coming year, is the Old Redwood Highway Multi-Use Path. So I've shared with you before, the Over Creek Pathway that Caltrans is building for Larkspur and Tam right now, that goes over Corder Madera Creek near the Sir Francis Drake Off-Ramp that touches down on Old Redwood Highway. We do have a funding, a funded project to bring that path down to the pedestrian overcrossing. But the path that would go from there to Warrenham is unfunded at this point, so that's something we're actively looking at grants for. Maintenance, couple of quick slides on maintenance. I always say if you don't maintenance, don't notice maintenance. It means they're doing a great job. When people notice maintenance, it's usually because the weeds are high or there's trees that are falling down and haven't been touched for a few weeks. But our crews done a great job with all of the routine maintenance they've been doing. In addition to that, they've had some one-time things that they had to deal with this last year. In response to the drought, they've been upgrading, they've been maintaining, they've been reprogramming all of our irrigation controllers so that we can water what we have as efficiently as possible. We don't want anything to die, but we're also aware that there are restrictions that we have to follow as far as when and how much. We had some pretty big storms early this year in October and December that the crews were out cleaning ditches and removing trees. We've initiated a citywide tree inventory and assessment. It started out in Doliver. We had all the trees assessed for disease and potential for failure. And we ended up taking out a handful of bay trees over there. And so what we want to do is make our way through the rest of the parks, make sure we identify any trees that we think we may have issues with, and make sure they either get pruned before something happens or taken out if they're diseased, and that's what an arborist recommends. We also began the battery conversion. We've tried out two different models now of leaf blowers to do that conversion. And as I've mentioned before, we did buy a camera so that we can speed up that storm drain inspection. So we do have an agreement with Ross Valley Sanitary District to use their equipment to do some of the inspections. But we've also got our own camera, so we can do some of the others and and speed up that process. And then one thing they've done less of this year, but it's a good thing, is the pothole repairs are down 75%. is the pothole repairs are down seventy five percent versus before we started the measure B program. So they're only doing about a quarter of the pothole filling that they were doing three or four years ago. So the goal for this year, in addition to all the routine operations that they do every day, they're going to provide help with the storm drain inspections with the camera. And then with traffic control and everything that we need to look at those storm drains. And then they'll continue to work as the drought restrictions evolve on working with our irrigation systems and making sure we've got the right planting and the right irrigation settings. And that's the last slide. So I'm available for any questions.
I have a question. How can I get a T-shirt that just says pothole reports down seventy five percent? Are there questions for Julian? Julian, that was a truly impressive report. Councilmember Way.
Julian, when do you sleep? That's a that's a big report of a lot of things accomplished. So great. I just wanted to give you some kudos for the quality of your maintenance staff. I've, yeah, I'm out and about every day walking in town and I I'm very impressed with how polite, how just friendly, how efficient they they appear to the community as they're out and about. You know, I walk on the path the Sander Marker Trail almost every day and sometimes they're taking their truck. And they're very aware of their surroundings of who's bicycling and who and they stop and they greet people. I just think you've set a really good tone for them. And I know it's been hard with many people being out from with COVID or being exposed to their other work environments or through their family environments that you've had to navigate a lot of staffing issues, but the the staff that you have, I think, really show well at your department. They're very they're very engaging with the community and I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, thank you. I will pass that along to them if they're not at home watching right now.
And it's too bad. We can't have the picnic and have a cornhole tournament like we did a couple of years ago. Those guys. They were pretty good at that cornhole, I have to tell you.
I hear there's a cornhole tournament coming up that we could tell them to enter, actually.
Yeah, there there is. That's another topic.
I I actually wanted to take an opportunity to note that one of the goals that we set with Public Works when Julian joined us was to really build it into what it needed to be. And I suspect if I brought his three counterparts back up to talk again. One of the things they would say is they have some jealousy because Julian's department is staffed the way that department needs to be staffed and it lets Julian be the director. And that's a goal I've set for me to help my directors reach. And so I see Franklin actually nodding his head in the back of the room. Because when you're not staffed correctly, your directors then have to be hands-on workers. And they don't get to take the time to do what they need to do to manage their area and move it forward and maximize the service to the community. And so I think a lot of Julian's presentation really reflects that he's has a full team and he's built a really robust team. And I'm super excited that he's setting as one of his goals to be more entrepreneurial and start to sell services. I recently helped some recruitments for one of our neighbors in the area of Public Works and was startled that how challenged they are to bring in talent. And so I know there's a need in some of our neighboring communities to get support from an engineering division. So to have one that has a full team right now is really exciting. I wanted also mention one other goal that we're building into the budget slowly this year and we'll kind of keep working on is I've challenged each of the department heads to be thinking about the professional development of all their staff. You know, professional development is one of the things that ebbs and flows in terms of when we can fund it. And certainly there are some challenges in every budget cycle, but I think this year is a good year to be talking about investing some money in the staff for professional development. And it really pushed that it be tailored. You know, each staff person, we're small. We have an opportunity to say you know, what will make this staff person's performance better? Sometimes we know we have a global need. Franklin and I've talked about his whole department will benefit from sort of a refresh on best practices and in just customer relations and also dealing with difficult members of the public. You've heard me say a few times, I think the public got a lot grumpier during COVID and that doesn't seem to be getting any better, even though we're coming out of our houses more. But I think a lot of times some of our staff need to be sent to some training that's very specific to their function and their personality. And so we're going to be working hard to do more of that this year and that that'll be a key internal investment. Couple of things before we close, Mr. Mayor. Want to remind, I said at the beginning, this is the first of four meetings about the budget. At the next meeting, we'll do the high level look at the budget that we're going to propose to you. So that will be Kathy Orm taking you through sort of the budget snapshot. And she and I will work together to talk about the assumptions we're building in the budget, the trends that we're seeing. I'll give you a little bit of a highlight. We do plan to bring you a balanced budget this year. But we're doing that in part by there's a few items that we think should be funded better than we're going to fund them. So we need to talk about what the strategy is to cope with that. It's the budget that's going to attempt to bring service levels back to where they need to be throughout every department. So we're very excited to be able to propose that. The other thing that you're going to see in there is we think sales tax is actually reaching back to pre-COVID times. We're probably more bullish than we bullish than we've ever been about our sales tax. And after doing some pretty detailed analysis with our consultant, we're going to be bringing you numbers that we feel pretty confident about. There is a I can't help myself that hard. I want to be a finance person, I suppose. And that means I have to think conservatively and that gloomy message is up there somewhere in my head. So this year's concern, of course, is inflation. We don't know how bad the inflationary factor in our economy may be, what that will do for our cost of doing business. And so those of you who have heard us talk lately about project cost estimates that Julian's brought to you. The contingency factors are higher than we've ever built into into the projects. And that's because not only are we doing our usual speculation about what may or may not happen with the project itself, but we're just adding in a factor for the cost being higher than than we're accustomed to. And we're starting to see a little bit of that in some of the bid returns now are starting to see those prices creeping up a little bit. So but overall, I think that you're going to see in the budget messages this year, things are going the way they should be going. And we're excited about that. The other thing is we'll be bringing you the CIP, our capital improvement program. So at the next meeting, it'll be that high level finance discussion. And then the second meeting in May is probably the heavy lifting meeting. That's where we'll take you deep into the into the budget and give you the opportunity to really pick at individual line items and ask us all the questions that you want. The CIP will come to you in some form, might not be the final product, but something that will allow you to ask the questions you want to ask about projects. And then the goal is then to bring you the package at the first meeting in June. For those who haven't seen our budget process in the past, we bring not only the budget for adoption, but seven or eight policies that govern our financial operations. And so we'll be bringing all those to you. I'm not sure if we'll have one ready for the June meeting, but we may be adding a new policy this year. We want to think about what happens in those years when we're fortunate enough to finish with a little more revenue than expenditures and maybe put some more guidance in place in writing to help us as we do that in the future. As you know, for the last several years, we've just been putting it into the cash pool to help us manage the bridge project. And with that going offline, it's timely to to start thinking about what we do going forward. So that'll be our process over the the next several meetings and we hope the public will attend and participate and engage in discussion and questions as we work our way through it. And then if all goes well, like I said, we'll be first first meeting in June, we'll have an adopted budget if all goes according to plan. Really want to thank the department heads for being here this evening and presenting and giving you a chance to just kind of get a lighthearted look at what we're doing. They, as I said, just an incredibly proud manager. They make my life really easy and any kudos I do get, I thank you for that comment earlier, Councilmember Candell. It really, you know, I tell them all the time, that's that's really for them. I just get to be the one who receives it. So thank you. And I think we've concluded that item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Dan. I want to respect Vice Mayor Paulson his courageousness in attending the meeting from Madrid, Spain, starting at three thirty AM. It's now six thirty in the morning there. Gabe, before you pass out, I noticed you had your hand up.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Harrow.
Yes, so I'll be, I'll be, I'll be brief. But I assume this is the time where we can say nice things about Julian.
Oh, yes.
Sure.
I didn't let you do that.
But I gave the floor to Vice Mayor Paulson first, so.
Right, well, that's fine.
Gabe, do you have a question?
It is. No, no, I actually wanted to say nice things about Julian. So that's why, that's why I said.
I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying, Councilmember Harrow. Gabe, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I thought we had moved on. Just briefly, you know, first, you know, in the spirit of what Kevin wants to do, I want to thank you, Julian. Particularly for, you know, presenting in a year to year, you know, back to back, you know, presentation. So it really helps us see, you know, what you set out and there's a lot of accountability there. Stepping back from really the the large amount of detail you gave. I want to ask the question that we ask, you know, our city manager, our strategy meetings, and it's what keeps Julian Skinner up at night? You know, so looking forward at twenty twenty two, you know, what in all of that you presented to us, you know, is is what you are, you know, prioritizing the most or concerned about the most?
Say it's got to the point where it's keeping me up at night. But you know, as we've been highlighting as of as of late, you know, we we have an unknown quantity in our storm drain condition. It's different than the streets. We all saw the potholes. We all saw the cracks. We all drove on them every day and we knew they were in really bad condition. The storm drains, for the most part, ninety nine percent of that that system, you can't see. You see the manholes and the inlets up on the surface of the street, but the pipes for the most part are not visible. And we only know what we know today based on some recent events where we've had to go in and dig up or get in a manhole and have a look or some of the limited video inspection we've had to to do to date. But we also know that the age of those pipes is right around where that material is is scheduled to to be to be good for. You know, the the material can disintegrate and old installations seventy five years ago, sometimes those joints come apart. So there's a lot of unknowns with the with the storm drains. I think, you know, we've got a good plan moving forward to get in and inspect them. You know, we've been fortunate. We've had, we did have a couple of sinkholes this year. We had storm drain failures and we had sinkholes. Fortunately, they were in areas that they cost us money, but you know, they didn't result in any other property damage. They didn't cause any significant road closures or anything like that. So you know, we've been, we've been lucky so far, but you know, it it's time to 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 move on from the luck and and to do a little bit of work and try and get ahead. And really see what kind of an issue we have and then and then work out a work out a plan from there. So I don't know if if all the storm drain videos come back and they're really bad, I may have some sleepless nights, but not quite there yet.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Now can I talk?
Yes, please.
So I just wanted to say nice things about Julian. And one of them is has to do with the bridge. And it kind of echoes what our city manager said about your ability to manage tough projects. I've been around here for a little while and have watched that bridge go up driving across it virtually every day. And it looks great. It's a real infrastructure accomplishment for Northern California. And I think it's something that you should take personal pride in. Because I do. And the same thing for the paving project. When when we were first talking about measure B, City Larkspur had among the worst reputations for its pavement of any community in Northern California. And now it has one of the best. And that's thanks a lot to the leadership that you have shown and making sure that that project has gone forward and inefficient in an effective way. And then just finally, I think you deserve to be awarded the hardest working Public Works Director in the state of California. Your contribution to this city is immeasurable. And so much appreciated. So those are my nice words.
Well stated. Thank you so much. And I think
Now I'm glad his performance review isn't tomorrow. Was it expensive?
Well, you know what? You may be in trouble because you've got some expectations to meet.
I actually, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask Julian to share something because I the bridge is coming to completion. And I know there's still folks that wonder why it took so long. Julian, how many days total would you guess we closed the bridge during the life of the project?
So I would say either very inefficient construction or no construction at all. If you added it all up, would have been about a year and a half of the project.
I mean, how many days did we actually, let's say, no traffic on the bridge since we started?
Oh, how many days was there no traffic on the bridge? There was two one week closures and one weekend closure.
Okay, so I wanted Julian to share that because I think the most remarkable thing the council challenged Julian with, and he hadn't been with us very long when you did it, was to do this project and not close the bridge. And so sixteen-ish, seventeen-ish days, you know, in the project, we closed the bridge. That's actually a big reason why it took four years, but we kept that major connection available to the public throughout it all. And a lot of times I have to remind folks the bridge was open. They were building a bridge while it was open. And that's really a a major accomplishment that we don't tout enough.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Truly amazing. I will just say one thing and it kind of sums up the monumental effort involved. I think Kevin said it, we went from zero to awesome in a matter of a few years. And it was the result of a work of multiple city councils, multiple staff and the community support, which we can't underestimate. An economist once told me when I was in graduate school that the quality of community of a community is gauged by the perception of people traveling and and seeing the quality of its streets. I think that is a really true statement. And I think that the work that the city and Public Works and Julian with your leadership and Dan Schwartz. We've become an illustrative example of that statement. I think it's really, really great. Other council member questions for Julian, comments? Are there members of the public that have comments who would like to ask questions of our Public Works Director?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
I have one last question. I don't expect an answer. But because of of the adaptation to rising sea levels, it's a and the understanding that the first casualties of sea level rise are not often the surface streets, but the pipes underneath them. As we look to replace and repair our storm sewers, are we going to be looking to put them back in the same locations? It just seems to me that with sea level rise, we would be smart to find an improvement to putting them back where they were. Julian, am I am I asking? Putting them back where they were. Julian, am I am I asking a good question?
So for the most part, the individual storm drains. Will go back pretty much in the same location and elevation, I think. What you'll see when it comes to sea level rise is some of your other infrastructure. Such as pump stations will be designed a little bit differently and you may end up with. Not necessarily Larkspur, but on the grand scale of things worldwide, you're going to see sea walls and and things like that. And you're going to have a lot of your internals will stay the same as they are and rather than changing everything. You'll leave a lot of the internal stuff the same and then you'll have one or two or three different kind of collective things. That will be adapted to 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 sea level rise. Because, you know, technically, everything that's, you know, within a within a subdivision, you're going to take care of. Sea level rise at the coast or somewhere where your system meets wherever that rise is is going to be. So there's, there's, there's a lot of planning ahead. But in some of the the forward planning documents that I've seen, people are tending to look more at a bigger scale. Improvements rather than going street by street and making individual changes such as the elevation of a storm drain.
So speaking of the Larkspur, Corto Madera. Area and the the Bay Shore, you know, there we kind of have an image of a. A sea-shaped Bay Shore. Going from Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, Larkspur, Corto Madera to Tiburon. Are you saying that the sea level rise adaptations are likely to more more likely to take place out at the Bay Shore? Than anything inland?
Might be, might be a good idea to save this for a properly agendized discussion. We didn't really set the agenda item up to get.
Well, I was just speaking conceptually, but I I agree. Better for another day.
I just don't want to have Julian inadvertently quoted speculating on something he didn't prepare either, so.
Understood. That's fair, fair, fair point.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julian. Great job.
Thank you.
Your your community appreciates you very much. All right, Dan Schwartz, what's next?
We're moving on now, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other questions from the council.
Seeing none, let's go.
The last item is your item, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, which is. Your consideration whether you want to appoint a Larkspur Citizen of the Year.
Okay, I. I'm going to turn to Catherine Way tonight. And she has an idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a a treat that we haven't been able to do for the last several years since COVID. Because this Citizen of the Year is honored in the Fourth of July Parade. And this is the first year we're going to have a Fourth of July Parade for a while, so it's nice to be back to revisit this. It's been, as we all know, a lot of changes in the last several years of what community involvement can really be. Since we've had lots of changes to what community activities can exist during this. Up and down period of of COVID response and shelter-in-place warnings. So I. I tried to think of what part of a jewel of Larkspur that we have that benefited people. When they had the opportunity to be outside and still engage in community safely during the early parts of the pandemic. When most of the schools were closed and businesses were closed and the rules were changing all the time as to how people could gather and etc. And one thing that came to mind to me was that we have a real jewel in Piper Park and that is our Larkspur Community Garden. So I've not had a plot there, but it's been very. Popular since it was started in 1982. And the person who's managed it as a volunteer manager of the community garden for 40 years. Almost is Stephen Connor. And I don't know if you've all met him at times or another while you're out and about, but he has. In so many ways, organized a community there that is allows people to grow their own vegetables, their own flowers. And to look at the garden as a therapeutic hands-in-the-soil benefits to people. And I've also come out of council meetings late at night sometimes and seen him working across the street at St. Pat's. And doing maintenance of their yard at St. Pat's. So as a volunteer, I'm sure. The website. About, and I bet you that a lot of these rules come from Stephen's work there. Really means to a community. He says in the very end, we strive together to grow as community as we continue to enjoy our garden as much as we can. We all can creatively grow organically, therapeutically, reduce stress and renew ourselves through recreation in the soil. We endeavor to do this more easily together than alone and share more abundantly as community than as individuals. So I think that embodies with the community garden that he has managed for 40 years is about, and I would like to put his name forward. And I reached out to Nick Stone, our our Associate Recreation Director or Community Services Director. And he is enthusiastically supportive of it. Mr. Connor does live in Larkspur and he has lived here for a very long time. So that's my nomination. There are a lot of other people who can. Who also have contributed to our sense of community in the last couple of years and I want to recognize that he is one of many.
Thank you, Catherine. I've known Mr. Connor for all the time I've lived in Larkspur. He's. Been someone who I've noticed. Always in the supportive role, wherever he is with a smile. Always setting the example for others, always with a kind word. What a gentleman. And I think it's a great suggestion to make. Are there other nominations for Citizen of the Year from the council this year? Councilmember Candell.
Yeah, thanks. I I don't disagree with that nomination. I just wanted maybe we could have like an honorable mention. If if that's the direction we want to go. If I look at the the past decade, you know, and try to pick out the. Well, at least one of the monumental changes that's gone on over the past year. To me, it is the library and the fact that we now are moving forward cohesively. As a community towards building a new library. I know we've been talking about it for 10 to 20 years at this point. But we seem to have momentum right now. We have funds raised. We have the grant outstanding. And I think a lot of that is due to the leadership that was provided by Joe Jennings. And I think he really deserves some recognition. Again, I don't, he doesn't even live here anymore, so he's not a citizen. I don't know if he's eligible. For Citizen of the Year, but I think he does deserve some type of. Recognition for everything that he's done for our community. So I wanted to put that forward.
At an appropriate time, a proclamation may be an appropriate alternative. Anybody would like to consider that? Other council member nominations for Citizen of the Year? I'll entertain a motion.
I I think Catherine should make the motion.
I would like to nominate Stephen Connor for the volunteer manager of the Larkspur Community Garden. As Citizen of the Year to be honored in the Fourth of July Parade.
I'd like to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. City Manager, do we need a roll call vote?
I believe you do, yes.
Would you please call the roll call vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Hillmore?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. And we'll look forward to seeing. Mr. Connor accept this honor and look forward to seeing his smiling face more and more. And also I want to acknowledge Councilmember Candell's suggestion and let's do talk about an appropriate acknowledgement for. Joe's hard work and service and creativity for betterment of our community. It's well deserved. With that, that concludes our agenda this evening. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment with gratitude to Councilmember Paulson, Vice Mayor Paulson from Spain.
I'll make that motion.
And a motion for adjournment, second?
Second.
I think it'll be passed without objection. Thank you very much for attending this evening. Thanks for your patience. It's been a long meeting. Thanks for all the hard work of the staff. And we'll see you at the next meeting. I think it's the beginning of May. Is that right, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct.
All right, good evening, everybody. Have a have a safe, safe night.